2015 to order. Our first order of business is an invocation. Today's invocation will be given by Pastor Michael Maiden from Church of the Nations. So Pastor Maiden, please come forward and if you can, please rise for the invocation.
Thank you Mayor and City Council. Heavenly Father, this day we thank you for our beloved city, the privilege of living in this city, this beautiful city. We ask your blessing upon it to continue, God. We thank you for the peace you gave us this past week when there could have been turmoil. We thank you for the guidance you've given those that have gone before us and led. We ask today, God, that you would lead our City Council members and Mayor Stanton, that you would give them wisdom, that you would give them insight, that they would feel God built the needs of the people and the wisdom that you would have to supply your provision and answers. We ask you to continue to bless our city, to protect us. We know that if you don't keep our city, God, we work in vain. So thank you for your blessing on our city. Thank you, God, for blessing this great country. Thank you for blessing this meeting today. We ask all of this in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you Pastor very much. Our pledge of allegiance will be led by Councilman Laura Pastor. Councilman?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
The first order of official business on today's agenda is a calling of the meeting of the Tatum Ranch Community Facilities District. So I'll ask the City Clerk to please call to order the Facilities District. Board Member DeCiccio.
Here.
Board Member Gallego.
Here.
Board Member Gates.
Here.
Board Member Noakowski.
Here.
Board Member Pastor.
Here.
Board Member Waring.
Here.
Board Member Williams.
Here.
Vice Chair Valenzuela.
Here.
Chairman Stanton.
Here.
The first piece of business within the Community Facilities District is a motion regarding the minutes from the July 2nd, 2014 special meeting of the Board of Directors. You have a motion on the minutes. We have a motion. We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Item number four is a resolution for the proposed budget for fiscal year 15-16 for the Community Facilities District. Do we have a motion on item number four?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any comments? Roll call. DeCiccio.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Gates.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Stanton. Yes, so the budget passes for the Community Facilities District on an eight to one vote. This is the final meeting forever and ever of the Tatum Ranch Community Facilities District. Councilman Waring, it's in your district. Are you shedding any tears today?
No.
No, all right. Does anyone have any final comments on the last meeting? I think Felder, you've probably been to more of these meetings than anyone else.
I tend to remember when we initiated this, so I am delighted to hear that we have come to the end and it has been successful and it all worked out. Thank you.
Are those fond memories or not so fond memories of creating this special district?
Let's just say they were interesting.
All right, for the final time, the meeting of the Tatum Ranch Community Facilities District is now adjourned. Now we'll move into the regular City Council formal meeting. Ms. City Clerk, would you please call the roll for the formal meeting? Councilman DeCiccio.
Here.
Councilwoman Gallego.
Here.
Councilwoman Gates.
Here.
Councilwoman Noakowski.
Here.
Councilwoman Pastor.
Here.
Councilman Waring.
Here.
Vice Mayor Valenzuela.
Here.
Mayor Stanton. Here. Ms. Holm, will you introduce yourselves to the audience for those who may need interpretive services?
Buenas tardes, me llamo Judy, soy intérprete de español. Si alguien necesita el equipo, por favor venga conmigo con el personal de la ciudad. Gracias.
Ms. City Clerk, would you please read the 24-hour paragraph?
The titles of the following ordinances and resolution numbers on the agenda were available to the public at least 24 hours prior to this council meeting and therefore may be read by title or agenda item only. Ordinances number G6019, G6033, G6035 through G6037, S41777 through S41803, and resolutions number 21328 through 21332.
Thank you very much. Now I'll ask for approval of meeting minutes. Councilman DeCiccio, did you have a chance to review the formal meeting minutes from March 25th, 2015? We have a motion approved. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Councilman Gates, do you have a chance to review special meeting April 15th, 2015?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion. We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. We'll now move on to boards and commissions. Vice Mayor, do you have a motion on boards and commissions?
Motion to approve Mayor's boards and commissions nominations. Motion.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Do we have a motion on council member boards and commission nominations?
Motion to approve council members' boards and commissions nominations.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. I do believe there are community members here to be sworn in for service on boards and commissions, so it'll be to my right, your left. I'll come down to the floor, square you in, and then if you would, please come behind the dais that individual council members can say thank you in advance for this important public service. Congratulations. Thank you for your service. Appreciate it very much. Thanks for your service. Appreciate it very much. Thank you very much for your service. We appreciate it. Congratulations. Thanks in advance, everyone, for your service. It is very, very important work. We'll now move on to the proceedings of the City Council as it relates to the adoption of our 2015 to 2020 capital improvement program and tentative 2015-16 budget ordinances. Item number one is a suspension of the rules. Vice Mayor?
Mayor, I move that the City Council suspends the rules and change the order of business to permit the holding of public hearings in connection with the 2015 to 2020 capital improvement program, the adoption of the tentative 2015-2016 annual budget and related items.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion, members of this council? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That item passes unanimously, so now we'll move on to the 2015 to 2020 capital improvement program. This will be a public hearing on the proposed 2015 to 2020 capital improvement programs. I will now declare the public hearing open. Are there any cards on this item? Ms. City Clerk?
Mayor, did we just do item five or was it item six?
I apologize.
Oh, item one.
We suspended the rules and so now we're going to be on the proposed capital improvement program for 2015 to 2020.
The one that we just voted on is what? I'm looking at the notes here.
We just voted on the suspension of the rules only.
Oh, I got it. That's right.
And so now I've now opened the public hearing.
Oh, so you called. Oh, got it.
I've asked for any cards. Apparently there are no cards, so I'll ask, is anyone in the audience here to give testimony on the proposed 2015 to 2020 capital improvement program for the City of Phoenix? Going once, going twice? The public hearing is now closed. The next item is the adoption of the 2015 to 2020 capital improvement program.
Vice Mayor, do you have a motion?
Item two is a public hearing on the 2015-2020 capital improvement. I will now declare the hearing open. Are there any cards on this item? There are a few cards here. Let's see. Louis Schmidt, President Louis Schmidt, did you wish to provide testimony on the proposed budget for the Phoenix City Council and the City of Phoenix? Following Louis Schmidt will be, oh, let's see, they're giving you some time, so you have up to four minutes. Robert Ward has granted you his time. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council and members of the public. My name is Louis Schmidt, President Afsmiloco 2384. We represent the blue collar employees of the City of Phoenix. Well, I want to start, you know, we're talking about the budget for the fiscal budget for the 15-16 year, and I just want to start by thanking all the city employees, including these officers right here, and all the city employees throughout the whole city providing services. Because of these employees, it's why we're balancing this budget again. This is the third straight year that the City Council, the City Council has balanced the budget with the assistance of the city employees. Often we get, you know, we get vilified in the media, we get vilified sometimes by some of our own council members wrongly and unjustly, but it's because of the ongoing cooperation that we have had, that we as employees have taken to work with the city to make sure that we're always balanced. But while we're balanced, we still have to be careful of what direction and what message we want to send. We always have to be cognizant that, you know, at the end of the day, we're human beings. You know, we live in the community, you know, we go to schools, you know, our children, you know, participate in the community too, and we often get disregarded, and that's unfairly and unjustly. So thank you to all the city employees for doing that. And then a few days ago, I heard on the media, you know, the mayor and the council, some of them were displeased because they felt the FAA, you know, misled them, and many of you in the audience may be here for that item today in support of the council, you know, the lawsuit. But the part where you said misled, well, this is where some of these public employees feel too, because six years ago, you know, the city manager Cavazos misled the employees by saying, "Work with us. We're in a $277 million shortfall. Work with us," and that's what the employees did. And now, Cavazos was supposed to be a two-year process, but here we are now six years with this budget being approved. We're going on six years of balancing the budget on the low hanging fruit, which is the city employees. So I'll just read a small statement that I wrote and I'll wrap it up, Mayor. As the council prepares to pass this budget for the next fiscal year, there are quite a few things that we can point out that are disheartening, but the biggest failure I see with this budget is the council's refusal to come up with new or innovative ways to generate revenue and their continued insistence that covering future costs on the backs of the current employees. It is no secret that this budget is based on pushing off certain financial problems to the future. It is also not a coincidence that future also includes union negotiations. While I will not go into lengths of calling this a grand scheme by the city manager and the council to take away more from the employees once again, I do think it is quite interesting that this council will avoid the T-word for raising revenue, but has no issues with mortgaging the future on the backs of those employees who are also voters, while shedding what are essentially crocodile tears about the plight of city employees. There is an old saying that those who fail to learn from history are doomed to repeat it. Unfortunately, this council is determined to allow history to repeat itself. In a way, I cannot blame you. The council has already shown they have no problems financing this city's future on the backs of employees. Of course, this does not affect you as the council members. You all have the ability to go back to your, you know, your other jobs that you guys carry, your outside careers. As council members, you are not faced with the mandatory salary cuts, lots of benefits due to the costs of maintaining them, and the worry that your job is going to be cut or contracted out. And before the joke is made that about being contracted out by the voters, I will remind, I will point out that incumbents historically win with the majority, win with the majority within the city. So Mayor, that's all I have to say on this. We're not opposed to this budget, but again, I just wanted to inform the public that it's because of the sacrifices that we're keeping these pools open, the libraries, after-school programs, the art programs that you guys, that the public enjoys. So thank you for your time, Mayor.
Thank you very much, President Schmidt, for taking the time to come down, noting also that Marshall Pimentel did not wish to speak but is in favor of the proposed item, and I'm assuming with the same qualifications that President Schmidt put on that support. Barry McCain, did you wish to provide testimony? You marked as neutral on this proposed budget. Good to see you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Either one, either one.
This one right here.
Yeah, that's fine.
Thank you, Mayor Stanton and City Council. I marked neutral for a reason. Now, I was born in Mesa, even though I live in Pinellas County, but as a disabled vet, I have to have a quiet. PTSD is like that. But it's very important what's going on here in Phoenix to me. Now, I believe in flexibility leads to sustainability. Now, this budget is very important, and I need all of you in on this. Now, Councilman DeCiccio, you're intelligent, I understand that, but you and Mayor Stanton got to kiss up and make whatever you got to do to make this thing work. I've got, the Vice Mayor is in on this. This is good. I've got Councilwoman Pastor, Councilwoman Williams, I think you can do this. That's why I'm here. I believe in you. I know that Councilwoman Gallegos, you're good for, you're very organized, and this I need. Now, the one thing I want to say, I don't like to say this, but I'm going to say it anyway. Councilman Noakowski, you've been missing in action too much. I need you in on this. I know that everyone I talked about can do this, and I encourage you, because the governor and the legislature, they're hiding money, they didn't do their job, and I don't like them pushing everything down on the cities, the counties, and the towns. So I need you all on the same page here. That's why I believe in Stanton. I'll let you handle it. Do your job. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. McCain. Thank you for the testimony. The good news is that it takes five votes to pass the budget. It is not required to be unanimous. Are there any additional comments from the public on this item? Going once, going twice? The public hearing is now closed. We'll now move on to item number five, which is proposed adoption of the tentative 2015-16 annual budget. Vice Mayor, do you have a motion?
Mayor, I move that item five, being ordinance S-41777, the tentative 2015-16 annual budget, be adopted.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. I'll now turn to members of this council. Comments? Councilman DeCiccio, please.
Just a couple of questions because we had a member, head of one of the labor groups come here and ask us some questions, and I just want to make sure that the public's aware of this. How much money Mario is built into this budget for total, not the marginal difference, but total merit and longevity?
Mayor, members of the council, Mario Poliagua, Budget and Research Director, Councilman DeCiccio, approximately in total, for the total amount of longevity, total amount of merit, I'm going off the top of my head, so I may not give you an exact figure.
All right, close enough.
But it's going to be approximately 17, 18 million dollars.
About 17 and a half million, approximately.
Right.
I don't have the actual budget in front of me, but that's it. Then, and I'll explain to the public what that is. And then the other part of it is, they were talking about bringing in more revenue. If this year were to be ranked, where would we be ranked in the amount of revenue we took in this year, ever, in the history of the City of Phoenix?
Councilman DeCiccio, if we look at the total amount of revenue, the total amount of tax-supported revenue, even outside of the general fund, it's well below where we've been in the past, mainly because of the total property tax has been significantly higher. However, when it comes to just general fund revenue, if we just look at that piece, it is higher than it has been in years past.
So this is the highest revenue year ever for the general fund, which we're approving today, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So I want the public to understand this because there's something else built into this budget and why I'm going to be voting against it. It's fiscally irresponsible. You have members of the unions coming in and talking about how they made the sacrifices and they've made all the cuts. Merit and longevity, merit are pay raises and longevity are bonuses. So if you look at it, I mean, that's the language that government uses, basically, instead of calling it what it is, this is what they use in order to confuse the public. There's over 17 and a half million dollars in the budget in pay raises and bonuses built into it. So when you hear the union leaders come in here and tell you that they're being, they're taking all the cuts, it's just not true. The other part of it is, they want us to raise taxes on you, all of you here, without looking at the efficiencies of what we're doing. We've already brought in more money, more revenue this year than in our history, and we're still facing a fiscal crisis. So that's one of the reasons why, and if you look at it within this budget here, why we're going to continually dig this hole unless we figure out a way to get out of it, which I believe is not that complicated. It's no different than the way you run your own homes and your own households. The way to do that is to start paying your bills and pay them and be responsible. This budget also has in it, built in, if you were to use your credit card, and I've used this as an example, to pay off your mortgage, how many people in the public would find that to be a responsible thing to do? How many of you would you use your credit card to pay off your mortgage? Use debt to pay debt? Instead of paying off the pensions, and because the pensions are taking more and more money every single year to pay off, they're literally extending that credit where it's going to cost us $69 million more in the future by extending that credit. So we're basically using debt to pay debt. Nobody, I can't imagine anybody on that side of the table thinking that that is a fiscally responsible thing to do. So in this budget, we have 17 and a half million dollars approximately of pay raises and bonuses where the unions are saying we were cut. We have more money than we've ever received in our history, and still there's a fiscal crisis out there. Makes you wonder why is that occurring? It's because we're not looking at the City of Phoenix in a strategic plan, looking at what are and what are not strategic functions and what we can do to improve our city. So I just don't want to complain about it. I want to tell you what needs to be done. What needs to be done is we need to get our fiscal house in order and not allow these types of things to occur. There are more things in this budget dealing with maximizing the primary, another language that government uses that's fiscally irresponsible. If you look at your roads, if you look at the way our capital projects, and that's going to be in the next part too, but the capital budget itself is fine, it's just the way it got there through this budget. The City of Phoenix has been diverting money from capital projects to pay for their operations to pay for this bloated system that's here at the City of Phoenix. Who does that? So when you start looking at potholes in your neighborhood, you start looking at your streets in disrepair, it's because the people up here are voting on a policy that literally takes more and more money away from capital improvement and literally gives it to the unions. That's what's occurring here, because we cannot get our fiscal house in order, because we are not practicing fiscal accountability, simple basic accounting measures that you and your own family do. I'm going to be voting against this budget. It's stuff that you're never told. You're always told the rosy things. You're only given half the picture here. You need to be given what the real fiscal issues are of this budget. What needs to be done is a true strategic plan based on strategic functions, making a determination what is and what is not strategic, simple stuff, simple things to do, then moving forward with a model that would work for everything and make the city a much better, a much better place for us fiscally, and it would improve our quality of life, because then you'll see resources diverted out to the public. One last thing, dealing with the pensions. The pensions are a problem, and they're getting worse and worse and worse. About $319 million this year is in total retirement costs. 319 million. 319 million, and it's growing at a clip of close to between 17 and 20 million dollars a year, and there's no end in sight. So as that continues to grow, whether you're on the right side of the spectrum or the left side, it doesn't really matter, because as those pension costs keep taking more and more money out of your pocket and out of the pocket of the city government, less and less services are going to be provided to you and the public, and there's going to be more and more pressure to raise your taxes until we fix it. All these things that you're hearing up here are just phony. It's just not true. Okay, folks? It's just not true. There has been no true pension reform at the City of Phoenix, otherwise you would see a decline in the cost, and it hasn't happened, and it hasn't escalated. So you're going to be faced with another $31.5 billion tax proposal for trains when the City of Phoenix can't even get its fiscal house in order? It doesn't make sense. So I'm going to be voting against this, Mayor, and thank you for the time.
Thank you, Councilman. Ms. City Manager?
Mayor, just to clarify on the revenue piece. So as the Budget and Research Director said, this is not our highest revenue year as a city, primarily because our property tax rate has remained constant while our property values have declined significantly. So overall, the city is actually not at its highest revenue. In terms of the general fund, in dollars, in actual dollars, we are 1% this year above last year. The reality, though, is that with inflation and per capita growth in city population, on a per capita basis, it probably doesn't rate as high as in other years, but in real dollars, yes, it is. And I would just say again, I would not propose a budget that is fiscally irresponsible. The budget that I proposed to the council and the community preserves services and does not increase taxes or fees. It does accept a pension payment plan proposed by the state for the public safety pension, and the public safety pension is really the system in terms of our pension costs right now that is growing the fastest. The city pension system has, through the reforms enacted by the voters and by the pension board and by the council, has leveled off in its cost, but the state-controlled public safety pension is now the main issue for our pension costs, and that is something that we plan to address in the next year and attempt to work with the state legislature on that aspect of the public safety pension.
Mayor, follow-up questions?
Councilman, of course.
Yeah, Ed, what year in our general fund have we ever had any more money than we have this year? We've had constant growth.
Mayor, Councilman DeCiccio, the Budget and Research Director did say the answer to that is no in terms of actual revenue. The point I was making was that costs and inflation eat into that revenue, and so just to give it a more balanced picture.
Do we have, to give it more balance, do we have more employees this year or less employees this year than we did, let's say, even two years ago?
Mayor, Councilman DeCiccio, we have fewer employees. The council has been very prudent in finding efficiencies for us, and we have reduced vacancies and other employee counts. So we have fewer employees today than we did last year.
What is our average cost per employee at the City of Phoenix for approximately 12,000 employees? Approximately?
I'm going to ask the Budget and Research Director, but what we need to do is to split that between our sworn employees and our civilian employees because they're really different types. Mario, what is the average total cost for sworn employees versus civilian employees? Again, this is off the top of my head, so I'm working by memory. So when we, when we look at the sworn public safety employees, the average total cost is around $130,000 per FTE. It does accept a pension payment plan proposed by the state for the public safety pension. And the public safety pension is really the system, in terms of our pension costs right now, that is growing the fastest. The city pension system has, through the reforms enacted by the voters and by the Pension Board and by the council, has leveled off in its cost. But, the state-controlled public safety pension is now the main issue for our pension costs, and that is something that we plan to address in the next year and attempt to work with the state legislature on that aspect of the public safety pension.
Mayor, follow-up questions?
Councilman, of course.
Yeah. Ed, what year in our general fund have we ever had any more money than we have this year? We've had constant growth.
Mayor, Councilman DeCiccio, the Budget and Research Director did say the answer to that is no, in terms of actual revenue. The point I was making was that costs and inflation eat into that revenue, and so, just to give it a more balanced picture.
Do we have, to give it more balance, do we have more employees this year or less employees this year than we did, let's say, even two years ago?
Mayor, Councilman DeCiccio, we have fewer employees. The council has been very prudent in finding efficiencies for us, and we have reduced vacancies and other employee counts. So, we have fewer employees today than we did last year.
What is our average cost per employee at the city of Phoenix? We're approximately twelve thousand employees, approximately.
I'm going to ask the Budget and Research Director, but what we need to do is to split that between our sworn employees and our civilian employees, because they're really different types. Mario, what is the average total cost for sworn employees versus civilian employees?
Again, this is off the top of my head, so I'm working by memory. So, when we look at the sworn public safety employees, the average total cost is around a hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars per FTE. When we look at the non-sworn civilian employees, it's closer to eighty, eighty-five thousand per FTE.
I think you're closer to ninety-five thousand per employee, and then your sworn's about a hundred-and-thirty-eight. Those were even the numbers from last year.
It's in that range.
Okay. So, we have, and then when you blend those two together, with over twelve thousand employees, our average cost per employee, that's all in, everything, is about a hundred-and-nine thousand, maybe a hundred-and-ten thousand per employee. Now, you ask yourselves in the public, is that fiscally responsible? Let me add one more thing onto that. A first-year clerk at the city of Phoenix, how many days off does a first-year clerk get, all in, federal, state, holidays, everything? Because that adds to costs, too. Does anybody know that? I can tell you, a first-year clerk is the lowest level we have at the city of Phoenix, is forty and a half days off their first year. And it goes up after that, yes, first year. It is incredible. It's fiscally irresponsible. All right, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Other comments from members of this council? All right, roll call.
DeCiccio.
No.
Gallego.
Yes.
Gates.
No.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Waring.
No.
Williams.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes, the item passes on a six to three vote. Next item on the agenda is item six, which is the proposed adoption of the tentative two thousand fifteen, sixteen capital funds budget. Vice Mayor, do you have a motion on item number six?
Mayor, I move that item six, being ordinance S dash four-one-seven-seven-eight, the tentative two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen capital funds budget be adopted.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Comments from members of this council on the capital budget? Roll call.
DeCiccio.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Gates.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes, item number seven is the proposed adoption of the tentative two thousand fifteen, sixteen re-appropriated funds budget. Vice Mayor?
Mayor, I move that item seven, being ordinance S dash four-one-seven-seven-nine, the tentative two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen re-appropriated funds budget be adopted.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any comments by members of this council on the proposed re-appropriated funds budget? Roll call.
DeCiccio.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Gates.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes, that item passes unanimously. We are now done with the special proceedings of the Phoenix City Council. Now, we'll now move on to liquor license applications, items eight through sixteen. Vice Mayor, do we have a motion on liquor license applications?
Motion to approve items eight through sixteen, holding out item fourteen for comments.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Are there any cards on those items? Any comments by members of this council? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That item passes unanimously, item number fourteen. Councilman Gallego?
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, item number fourteen. Leonard Clark, you had comments. Was it, was fourteen you want to come out on, the seven-eleven liquor license, or item nineteen?
Is that a nineteen?
No problem. So, we have a motion and a second on item number fourteen. Any comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Now, we're on the old business, item number seventeen, which is the proposed air service development marketing program. We have a couple cards on that item. Mike Huckins, representing the Greater Phoenix Chamber of Commerce, good to see you. Up to two minutes of testimony.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. For the record, Mike Huckins, here with the Greater Phoenix Chamber of Commerce. The chamber wanted to briefly note its support for the air service marketing program. As you all know, Sky Harbor is a vital economic engine for the city and the region as a whole. Attracting more flights into the airport will help sustain the growth of the airport and keep Phoenix and Sky Harbor competitive with other cities and airports around the Southwest. As the city works to attract businesses and tourists to come to Phoenix and Arizona, the attraction of new domestic and international flights, in our view, will greatly aid that effort. As you know, the chamber recently launched the Phoenix Forward Economic Development Initiative in partnership with the city and various other entities. We see programs such as the one you are considering today supporting that effort as we help businesses here in the valley to grow and expand. We respectfully ask that you support this item, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Mr. Huckins? Thank you for coming down, thank you for your testimony. Oppose the item, not wishing to speak, is Opal Wagner. Ms. Wagner, did you provide testimony before this council on this item?
She's down.
Did you want to provide testimony? You marked a card, "not wishing to speak," but you're more than welcome to speak if you'd like to.
I'm welcome to speak.
Please, huh?
Thank you. My name is Opal Wagner. I live in one of the central Phoenix historic districts impacted by the Grand Avenue flight path. And I had previously spoken on this at the Downtown Aviation and Redevelopment Subcommittee meeting, and just asked the council to consider the disconnect that this shows to the people suffering under these flight paths, day in, day out, every two minutes, twelve, fourteen, sixteen, sometimes twenty hours a day, and ask what kind of message it sends to the aviation industry that the aviation department and Mr. Blue had recommended this, want to pay up to one and a half million dollars for airlines to add new routes, and also to add new flights to existing routes, to basically pay them to fly more airplanes over our historic neighborhoods. And like I said, I think that sends a really bad message, and it doesn't really show a lot of sensitivity, I think, on the part of the aviation department to how much the community is suffering out there from the aircraft noise. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Wagner. In favor of the item marked "to speak if necessary," Gonzalo de la Melena, representing the Arizona Hispanic Chamber of Commerce. Gonzalo, it's up to you, do you want to speak or not? Come on down if you want to, now's the time.
President of the Arizona Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, wanted to show our support for the importance of investing in Sky Harbor, one of the top ten airports in the country. Really, our future competitiveness in the global economy will be dependent on if we're able to make competitive market structures for Sky Harbor, for the city of Phoenix, and for the state of Arizona. If we look to compete with Colorado, or Copenhagen, or China, Arizona and Phoenix has to be super competitive in that structure. And so, Arizona Hispanic Chamber of Commerce is favorable for supporting this investment. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. de la Melena. Ginger Maddox, you're neutral, do you provide testimony? Ms. Maddox? Good to see you.
The reason I said I'm neutral on this is because I'm equally opposed and equally in favor. Being a businesswoman, I understand the need for a strong marketing plan. I just think that the phase that we are in right now, we need to really think about how much more business we can handle in our airport until we get this problem fixed. Now, I don't know how much more international business this marketing plan would bring. I think there's high hopes on my part that might not be as great as what the airport is actually expecting. But, I do know that British Airways is the largest plane that flies in and out, it makes the most noise. So, if we attract a lot more international business, we're going to have a lot more equipment of this type. And when I read through the marketing brief, I also noticed, I was thinking it was just international, but I noticed that we're looking for more domestic as well. So, I know Councilman Waring made the statement at one point that perhaps we need to look at what the economics is going to be for our airport as long as we have this problem. It is a wonderful market generator, but I agree with Ms. Wagner, it's a lot to ask of our population to continue to grow the airport when we have such a tremendous pressure on the neighborhoods. And I also know that we're going to have to pay for this lawsuit, and waiving landing fees, I'm sure is a revenue generator. I don't know how much in comparison to the other profit centers that we have, but to me, a million and a half dollars is a lot of money to waive. So, I'd just like for you to take it into consideration that growing our airport at this moment may be a lot to ask of our population, especially when we're looking at our lawsuit to take anywhere from a year and a half to two years to come to fruition, and that's if we get what we want. So, please take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Maddox, for your testimony. Are there any other cards on this proposed item? I don't believe we have a motion yet on item number seventeen. Do we have a motion on item number seventeen? Let's see if we get a second, then we'll take testimony from, or say, comments from members of the council.
Motion to approve item seventeen.
We have a motion, we have a second on item number seventeen, and I'll just make a quick comment, and then hand it over to Councilman Noakowski. Ms. Wagner, I respect very, very much the testimony that you gave and the opinion that you have. And by some, it's been suggested for decades that having a urban airport in the heart of a city is inconsistent with successful neighborhoods nearby. I believe that for decades, the city of Phoenix has very, very successfully, not perfectly, but very successfully overall, balanced the benefits of having a urban airport in the heart of a city, and it is a massive benefit, not only to the city of Phoenix, this entire region, state of Arizona, the southwestern United States. We very successfully balanced the benefits of an urban airport with the needs of the surrounding community. A growing and vibrant Sky Harbor Airport is probably the most important thing we can do to support the business success of the state of Arizona. And we, throughout decades, prior to me as mayor, prior to this city manager, prior to members of this council, that has been an ethic that we have tried to achieve here in the city of Phoenix, is balancing of those interests. The FAA has upset that balance. The FAA upset that balance without a single public hearing, without seeking any public input as to the proposed effect of that change. If they had done so, it would have been clear that the categorical exclusion was not appropriate under these circumstances, that the proposed changes would have had a very negative impact as they are having on many neighborhoods, not only your neighborhood, but in South Phoenix and Levine. The process followed by the FAA to, before making this decision to change the departure procedure, was done inappropriately. And that's why I think unanimously of the city council, we feel strongly about that and have taken the very strong step of filing litigation against the FAA to stand up for that principle, that you don't make a decision like that, that has such a negative impact on the quality of life of thousands and thousands of residents without following the appropriate legally required procedure. And I believe that we sent a very strong statement by the filing of that litigation. But, the ability of this city to balance the interests of a growing and vibrant airport, how important that is to the overall economy of the city, and to fight, to protect that balance, and this litigation is exactly that, to protect that balance. Now, everyone knows there's going to be an impact on the overall community, but we resisted efforts decades ago, and people suggested we ought to move the major airport to Casa Grande, or move the major airport for the state of Arizona north of the city of Phoenix. Cities that have done that, I think, have gone in the wrong direction, it's hurt their economy. So, you know, this is a sophisticated city, and we can stand up for the principle that there should be a balance in those interests, which includes a growing airport, and still fight the FAA when they have upset that balance, and we don't want to retreat, I think. So, I think it would send a very, just the opposite message if we were to not move forward with a statement that we in the city of Phoenix can successfully balance those interests. Sorry for the long-winded answer, but I thought it deserved, at least my thoughts as mayor of the city, as to why it is not inconsistent in any regard to support today's item while still strongly supporting the litigation that we filed against the FAA. Councilman Noakowski?
So, Mayor, I'd like to know from staff, how many additional flights would this bring to Sky Harbor?
Mayor, Councilman Noakowski, obviously, the marketplace will determine what actually happens. Our anticipation would be extraordinary success, would be having three new flights internationally occur. And generally, there's about one or two destinations in Mexico, one or two destinations in Canada, and then we would anticipate, hopefully, one trans-oceanic flight across the next three years as a possibility. But, it is fairly de minimis number for these flights.
Councilman, are you going to allow Paul Blue that much wiggle room in his answer? Are you going to tighten him up a little bit on that?
I've got a follow-up question on that. So, what's the economic impact that it would have on the city of Phoenix?
Mayor, Councilman Noakowski, our best indicator is some economic impact analysis that has been conducted related to the British Airways flight, which is obviously a well-known flight that goes to London Heathrow. It's anticipated and analyzed by economists to be, on an annual basis, the one daily flight to the UK is worth one-point-three billion dollars to the local metropolitan and state economy.
So, how many flights do we actually have coming out of Sky Harbor on a daily basis?
Mayor, Councilman Noakowski, approximately twelve-hundred.
We're talking about three extra out of the twelve-hundred?
For international flights, yes, and that is our estimation. Obviously, as I said, it could be less, it may be more, but we don't anticipate substantively more.
And I just want to make it very clear that we're committed to fight the FAA on this noise ordinance that we have out there with the flight path changing and all, but at the same time, we've got to continue to support the growth of Sky Harbor, because after the lawsuit's over, we need to make sure that we continue to have the friendliest airport in the country. And I'm going to be supporting this motion, and I think it's really important that we continue to create jobs and we support the staff at our airport.
Councilman DeCiccio?
Thank you, Mayor, and I think Councilman Noakowski said it right. It's real important that we do everything we can to protect Sky Harbor for many years, and the mayor mentioned this, too. The airport has had a great relationship with its neighbors, a great relationship, and I can't emphasize to you enough the importance of the airport to our economy, and how important it is that we allow it to prosper and not allow it to get stale. So, for those that are fighting the flight paths, it was clear that this was an FAA decision of how they changed it, and they did it very disrespectfully to the public. I mean, they didn't even follow, they sat here in their own meeting at the city of Phoenix and said that they did not even follow their own rules. Now, that is the federal government at work, quite frankly, but at the end of the day, we have an obligation to protect the citizenry, and this council unanimously has said that we're going to do that. But, for those that are fighting the flight paths, do everything you can not to try to damage our airport either. So, there's a fine balance there, and the balance is this, is that the airport is a critical component, it's for years done a fantastic job of working with the neighbors and working with our community. On the other side of it, the key issue is what the FAA did by changing the flight paths. That's where we need to stay the focus on that. So, you know, I'm going to be supporting this because I think it's important for the long-term viability of the city, and that we continually find ways to bring in new business into our community and find economic growth. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other members of the council? Councilwoman Pastor?
I think it's very important for economic growth, but I also think it's very important to have a balance of economic growth, especially with flights flying over neighborhoods and impacting major health situations and other dynamics. My question is, how many domestic flights would you increase? How many domestic routes would be increased?
Mayor, Councilwoman Pastor, I'm going to ask Deborah O'Stryker to give us a little bit more detail about the number of cities to which we have no service, where we have requests for service.
Yes, thank you. Mayor Stanton, Councilwoman Pastor, I'm Deborah O'Stryker, and in this capacity, Deputy Aviation Director today. We do have a few domestic cities listed on the list of potential takers of this proposal, and those are generally cities on the east coast of the United States who have a high business potential, where we have lost a great deal of service since the increase in fuel charges. So, many airlines have chosen not to fly to medical and technical hubs like Raleigh-Durham non-stop, or Boston, and several other of those educational and technical towns. And so, should they choose to take advantage of this, those would be some of the limited cities that we would hope to achieve. However, like Mr. Blue said, maybe... However, like Mr. Blue said, maybe one over the course of the year we might achieve.
Mayor, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Pastor, there are three cities, Hartford, Providence, Jacksonville, where there's no service today. There are five cities where we have high demand for service and limited access, Raleigh-Durham, New Orleans, Des Moines, Boston, Cleveland. And I apologize, I missed one where there's no service, which is Richmond, Virginia.
So we're anticipating one domestic flight, am I hearing?
We are anticipating a limited number. We don't know what will come through. We haven't actually pursued this marketing. It may be one, it may be five. I don't know what will come through for certain. I think five would make us feel like it was an extraordinarily successful program, five daily flights.
Okay, so I'm hearing three international, five daily flights. So is that eight flights per day? Or is that a flight from Raleigh to Phoenix, Phoenix back to Raleigh? What does that look like?
So Mayor, Councilwoman Pastor, we think that's, that eight flights is across three years. We think it'll take three years to achieve those outcomes, and that is generally related to daily service to each of those cities. So a plane arrives and a plane leaves.
That's two flights, or is that considered?
That's considered a flight.
Flight. So it's one flight, to and back?
A flight that comes to Phoenix and then leaves Phoenix.
Okay. I'm just getting clarity.
No worries.
Because of how many flights then will be placed up in the airspace, and I'm getting clarity for others. I have several questions, so can I keep going?
Of course.
I would like to know, how many flights and money did we generate, revenue did we generate from the current plan that was, that's in place, that's going to expire June 30th?
Yes, Mayor and Councilwoman Pastor, we had one airline take advantage of this program that has been in place for the last several years, and that was WestJet took advantage of a program where they were reimbursed $100,000 for nonstop service to Toronto. And based on the ASU Economic Impact Study, while we don't know exactly how many dollars those Canadian passengers spent here in Phoenix, the estimate is somewhere in the neighborhood of close to $1 billion that a flight like that could generate over the year for our economy.
My third question, I think it's a third. Is it possible to ask these airlines for a voluntary no-fly zone after nine o'clock?
Mayor, Councilwoman Pastor, the, these airlines, the airlines have to be dealt with as a group, not as individuals. And so one of the things that the FAA and our dominant airlines have talked about is voluntary flight procedures in the evening. So the answer to your question is, this would fall in that process for being, creating a night-flying procedure. We can't treat one carrier different from the other carriers.
So then we're...
I'm sorry, under federal law.
So then we're asking them as a group? If we're recruiting new airlines, and so are we asking all the airlines that are participating in Sky Harbor right now as a group to fly voluntary no-fly zone after nine o'clock? Is that what we're asking?
We have, we asked the airlines exactly as a group, the FAA and American and Southwest Airlines, to consider changing their flight procedures between nine, and I believe we said 7:00 AM. The response from the FAA and the airlines was that they would be open to exploring different procedures flying at night, that they had a process that they believe is appropriate to go through, that they have used at other airports. That would determine both the hours and the nature of the different flight procedures. So I have to be, you know, very specific to say there isn't a precise proposal on the table. It's a general willingness to contemplate that discussion and pursuing different flight procedures in the evening hours, but a time not certain.
And then what are the route qualifications? It says landing fee waivers would be granted for up to 12 months, depend upon route qualifications.
I'm going to ask Ms. O'Stryker to speak to the specific details.
So Mayor, Councilwoman Pastor, the route qualifications are rather complex in that there are several days a week that they must be required to fly, in some cases, in order to qualify. They must fly nonstop and only to cities where we have authorized in advance. And in this case, it means where we have no service at all, or where we have targeted specifically, as I had mentioned earlier, with those cities that we are looking to add service.
Thank you. My last question is, how many jobs will be created by adding this, adding the eight flights?
Mayor, Councilwoman Pastor, I think I'll let Ms. O'Stryker. The economic impact analysis, I think, references this in some regard.
Yes, Mayor, Councilwoman Pastor, we haven't run the numbers specifically on any certain number of flights, other than the number that we have on the current international flights we have now, which is 20, and that has generated 15,000 jobs.
So we can't break it down to...
If it were eight, then perhaps it would be around 7,000 jobs.
Yeah, okay. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman. Any additional comments? Councilwoman Williams, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I've had the privilege of working with the airport for many years, trying to recruit additional services to Phoenix. We have worked very diligently. We have called on many carriers regularly, and have not been successful to date. And it is because it is an extremely competitive industry. And if you look at the other airports, the other majors, look at Dallas and some of the other cities, their incentive plan is much better than this one. And I wish we could do better, but I honestly believe that if Arizona wants to be competitive in a global market, and that's all I hear, is we need to have more business in Mexico, we need to talk to more companies locally to get them to export out to Canada, to Mexico and abroad. We have to have international air service, nonstop air service. And I would feel like we were on the top of the world if in three years you got three people, three carriers, quite frankly. There's a shortage of planes, they're just now taking new planes. It takes a certain plane to be able to fly the distance, to take off at Sky Harbor when it's 115 degrees. Load capacities are much more stringent. It's, it's a very difficult thing, but I am a firm believer that we have an airport second to none. And when I attended the aviation's, International Aviation Symposium about a month ago here in Phoenix, I had the privilege of sitting with the CEOs of several of the airlines. And I was directly asking them, so when are you going to start this flight to this city, a direct flight? Or are you going to step up American and go international from Phoenix? And the answer, quite frankly, was no, not at this time. And I think the merger, the changes in alliances have elevated the competitiveness that when we look at Tokyo, or we look at, in Mexico, or Canada, or France, they have to review every single thing, and I will tell you, they know everything that's going on in this community. I was absolutely amazed. They said, how many businesses have had new starts in the city of Phoenix? Whoa. How many jobs have come in? How many expansions? Are your revenues up? What's the viability of the city of Phoenix? They ask tough questions because they want a guarantee that they're going to have it successful, because it costs a lot of money to bring a new route in here. I am a firm believer that this is a good package. I hope it brings us more carriers. I'm confident we'll get one or two, but I don't think we have to worry about seven or eight or 10 or 12 carriers starting within a year. It takes six months to a year to negotiate one contract with these. Hopefully, the lawsuit would be settled. Phoenix would be on the winning side. And the timing could just coincide pretty perfectly with that, because that's about how long it takes to negotiate an agreement to get somebody to even come in here. So anyway, I am supporting this, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman. Any additional comments by members of this council? Vice Mayor?
Mayor, I too am supportive of it. I want to be very sensitive of what's going on. We, we have filed litigation against the FAA. It's unfortunate that we have to be there, but we are there. That said, and we can, we should continue those efforts. That said, we are talking about an additional, you know, one to two flights, perhaps a few more, and I don't say that, I don't, I don't say that, especially as I sit next to my colleague who, along with other colleagues, who, whose constituency is really being impacted by this. I don't want to be, by no means, I don't want to sound insensitive. I do know that, that while we continue to work through those, those issues, it's important to continue to, to, you know, increase some of these flights, which in turn benefits our economy. It'll put people to work, and, you know, we lost several flights going back east. We have to get those flights back. Perhaps this is a tool that we can use to do that. And, you know, some of the international flights as well, I understand that, that a Mexican airline is considering additional flights right now, and, and probably only would if these funds are available. So while we continue down the path of the FAA litigation, I think we have to also consider strengthening our economy as well, and that's why I'm supportive here.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor. Any additional comments? Councilman Nowakowski, please.
Mayor, I agree 100% with the Vice Mayor, is that this is one of our tools that we have to negotiate. I know that was the key factor when we sat down in Mexico and negotiated with Volares. And we need to have some type of incentives that other cities are offering these airlines. So I believe it's a tool we need. I believe that we need to continue the fight with the FAA, and I believe that my colleagues and, and our staff will continue that. And we're going to come out winning at the very end, but at the same time, we need to continue to build our airport. So once again, I'll be supporting this 100%, and I think we need to give you all the tools to make sure that we have the best airport out there in the country. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any additional comments? Roll call.
DeCiccio. Gallego.
Yes.
Gates.
Yes.
Nowakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes, the item passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is ordinances, resolutions, and new business. Vice Mayor, are we ready with an omnibus motion? Motion to approve items 18 through 45, except the following items. 18N, 22, 24, 29, 36, and 40, noting item 22 is as corrected, and excluding these items for public comment. 18 through 21, 24 through 28, 37, 40, and 41. All right, that is our omnibus motions. Any questions about that? We have a motion, we have a second. Roll call.
DeCiccio.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Gates.
Yes.
Nowakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes, those items pass unanimously. Next on the agenda is item number 18. We have a card on item number 18. So I will take testimony on all of 18. We'll be voting separately on 18N when we do vote, because Councilwoman Pastor has a potential conflict and will not be participating in that item. Mr. Pat Vint, did you wish to provide testimony on number 18? Looks like you particularly want to talk about A, D, E, H, and I. Two minutes. Good to see you.
Yes, yes, I, okay, turn on the mic, somebody.
Be on.
Item 18. You people are setting up there, making decisions about all kinds of things, unanimous, not unanimous. But on item 18, it takes up the whole alphabet, plus three, A, A, B, and C. All I want to do is speak on five of the items, and I should get two minutes on each, that'd be 10 minutes. Anyway, the first A, there's Maria Meza against the city of Phoenix for an award of $68,909.82. D is Eli Bettany against the city of Phoenix for $125,000 for some stupid mistake. And on E, Goldberg and Osborne in trust for Dennis Schultz, that's a big attorney outfit, $100,000, and you just lumped them all together. And then you have item H, Linder and Gully client trust account for Alicia Guzman, $2,050,000 for a bodily injury automobile. This is beginning to prove, be handed out, that we don't have anyone in the city of Phoenix that's accountable or responsible for anything. If this came out of your pocket, you'd be doing something different, like it's coming out of every citizen's pocket. Then you go to F, or I, Solomon Rollahan in trust for Sergio Gonzalez Rodriguez, $65,000. And you, you're trying to say that you're a responsible, accountable body in the city of Phoenix. You're not. When you lump all these kind of things together, it's a disaster. Now, I'm going to take the rest, the eight minutes that I have, because I'm speaking on five items.
Mr. Vint, I'm, I, that's a decision I get to make, and I'm asking that you limit it to two minutes on all of item 18. We have a large number of people here, and we have a full, full agenda. So I think you've made outstanding points on the items you wish to speak about, and so now we have a motion, excuse me, we do not have a motion on 18. Can I get a motion on number, item number 18, holding out 18N?
Motion to approve item 18, holding out 18N.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any comments, members of the council? Roll call.
DeCiccio.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Gates.
Yes.
Nowakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes. Motion on 18N, please.
Move of approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, noting that Councilwoman Pastor has a potential conflict and will not be participating in this item. Are there any cards? Any comments? Roll call.
DeCiccio.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Gates.
Yes.
Nowakowski.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes. Item 21 is next. We have a motion on item number 20, 19? I apologize, item 19.
Motion to approve item 19.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Mr. Clark, did you wish to provide testimony on item number 19?
Thank you, Mayor, and councilmembers. I just want to say that I strongly support this motion to appoint the proper officials in the funding and the balloting places where the citizens of Phoenix can go on August 25th. I believe it says 29 voting centers, and I just strongly ask all of my fellow citizens of Phoenix, please don't waste your vote. There are too many people serving overseas right now, too many people who never came back, fighting for your right to vote. I understand if you don't want to vote, but even if you don't want to vote, just go vote for Mickey Mouse, for crying out loud, because people are dying, people have died, for your right to vote. We can't waste it, because it is, we're getting less and less power, and I'm not saying that towards you personally. So thank you very much, strongly support it, and please vote.
Thank you very much, Mr. Clark. We have a motion, we have a second. Any comments from members of the council? Roll call.
DeCiccio. DeCiccio.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Gates.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes, that item passes unanimously. Next item is item number 21. Do we have 20? Okay, 20 got pulled out, I'm sorry. Item number 20, do we have a motion on item number 20?
Motion to approve item 20.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on item number 20. Louis Schmidt, did you have testimony on item number 20? This is the electrical safety training contract.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council. My name is Louis Schmidt. Again, for the public who doesn't know, this is a training contract that's been put in place to make sure that the employees who are doing, who are performing electrical work throughout the City of Phoenix perform it safely and they have the proper training. And with this training, this is crucial training, I think, I think it was two weeks ago when we did that demonstration, I think it was very insightful for you guys. And it's good, in order to make sure we have quality employees, we have to make sure we give them quality training. As you know, it takes less than four milliamps to kill a person, you know, to stop the human heart. So some of the voltages that our employees are dealing with is some of the incoming medium voltage coming into some of the water plants for 69,000 volts. And that's pretty dangerous stuff. But it's because of the quality training programs that the city is offering with today's vote, that is how we ensure that the public is safe. Because, again, we do the work that makes, that keeps this building safe, keeps all the libraries, pools, everything safe that the public uses. So that's why we need this item. This is not an item for you to grandstand on or for your political ideologies or your beliefs. You know, we don't need a Michelangelo paint something unfalse to the public, but we ask for you to approve this item. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Louis Schmidt. Also in favor, not wishing to speak, Barry McCain, Marshall Pimentel, and Robert Ward. We have a motion in favor of item number 20. We have a second. Any comments from this council? Roll call.
DeCiccio.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Gates.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes, the item passes on a seven to two vote, item number 21. Vice Mayor?
Motion to approve item 21.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on 21. Louis Schmidt, did you wish to provide testimony on item number 21, occupational physical therapy services contract?
Mayor, thank you for this. It's just alarming to see the no votes on the last item. I mean, what, this electrical safety training is like when you vote yes to provide these officers bulletproof vests and training. Do we want a workforce that is untrained? Is that what we want as public? We don't want that. We want to, you know, we want to make sure that when we enter buildings and facilities, that our employees, you know, that the public is safe. And it's just irresponsible for you to, for the two votes that were just no on crucial training that is needed by the City of Phoenix. But this item is about occupational therapy. As it was said in the last couple items, a couple minutes ago, we had the lowest staffing levels in more than 40-plus years. And what happens is, when you have the lowest staffing levels, because the city keeps cutting and cutting and cutting, we do have employees doing more with less. We have more officers on, you know, doing, you know, physical work, you know, on their own who are getting injured. We have firefighters getting injured. We have rank-and-file employees, you know, in the plants everywhere, providing services, getting injured. And when they get injured, they need physical therapy. So that is why we need this item, because we are doing more with less. You know, a few minutes ago, you heard the District 7 representative state that the city's painting some picture. Well, he is the Michelangelo of painting the wrong picture. And this is just, it's unfalse, it's untrue. You don't get 40 days off per year. All your leave has to be approved. It's not, you know, you don't just get to take it. But again, it's misinformed information like that that is used to stir the public, not give you the truthful information. But again, because of the council's action to keep cutting and cutting and cutting budgets and more and more and more, you're hurting employees. Two weeks ago, we had one employee get hit, you know, get hit up in North Phoenix. None of you ran to the hospital, none of you even bothered to see if he was okay or not. And it's not, it doesn't matter where, what department he works for. The department reacted, you know, the right way, and the city manager reacted the right way. But it is, this employee got hit, it was a hit and run, he's going to be okay, but he hasn't, he hasn't come back to work yet. Now, should we just cut his benefits and, you know, and not give him any physical therapy? No, we have to be sure that we protect our public servants who provide the crucial services. So again, thank you for your support, and we ask that you vote yes on this item because we keep continuing to cut the budgets. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
In favor, not wishing to speak, Anthony Ruelis, Marshall Pimentel, as well as Robert Ward. We have a motion on item number 21. We have a second. Any comments, members of the council? Councilman DeCiccio, please.
Well, I can't help but respond to that. Here's what happens with some of these contracts. If you look at the individuals that are on that, basically, union, city employees, they end up rigging these contracts for their own benefit, for their own pals. That's why I vote against some of these things, because these contracts are not as clean as they should be. And generally, you put the wrong, you put the people that are the beneficiaries on these committees, just like on the pension stuff. And then this is why you end up having problems. It is what it is. When it comes to the 40 and 1/2 days off, that is a first-year clerk, lowest level we have, first year on the job. From day one to day 12, they get 40 and 1/2 days off. It's in our policy book. And then they get an average, not an average, they get an additional 10 hours per month added on. It's not unusual for some employees to retire with over 2,000 to 3,000 hours after they've been here for 20, 30 years. And then they get to cash in a portion of those unused sick days that accumulate years after years after years, not at the rate that you earned it, but at the rate that you received it in your final year. So you may start off at $15 an hour and at $30 an hour is where you get to cash in those times. Everybody here gets a casino chip, basically, to cash in. Everybody gets a cash in and a pension and a 401K. So that is the philosophical problems that we have here at the City of Phoenix. And the fiscal issues are just not going to go away because we wish them away. It's until we are ready to fix our structural house and get it put back in order. So why I vote against it, and people know I'm pretty direct about this, is because it is down a path that is fiscally unsustainable. And at the end of the day, whether you're on the right or the left, if you're on the left side, you're going to see your programs cut. Those that wanted to see less taxes, you're going to see increased taxes and fees until the City of Phoenix gets its fiscal house in order. That's what happens when the unions do these things. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you very much. Any additional comments from members of the council relative to the occupational physical therapy services contract? Roll call.
DeCiccio.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Gates.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes, item passes unanimously. Next item is item number 22. We have a motion on item number 22.
Motion to approve item 22.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Are there any cards on item 22?
As, I'm sorry, motion to approve item 22 as corrected.
No cards. Councilman Gates, did you have questions or comments?
Yes, I had comments. Mayor, I'm going to be supporting this item. We've had discussions here, there have been discussions in the media, that although we had a balanced budget this year, we're facing right now somewhere between a $30 to $50 million budget deficit for the next fiscal year. So we've got to, we've got to begin tackling that. And one of the ways we can tackle it is by bringing down the healthcare costs for our city employees. And item 22 is, moves us in that direction, brings in a consultant who can work with us to bring those costs down. And, I mean, there's one way you can do it, and that's just by cutting the healthcare benefits of the employees. But there's a better way to do it, and I thank the city manager for bringing in this consultant to work with us, work with our employee groups, to, there have been discussions of somewhere between $10 and $15 million in possible healthcare savings, which can, you know, get us a long ways towards addressing that deficit that will be looming for next year. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Any additional comments? Councilman DeCiccio.
And Mayor, and this follows in line with the conversation I had in my office with the city manager. I would hope that whatever we do, we don't look at just what other governments are doing, but we look at the people out here in the public and the type of health services that you get, and whether or not we should be getting the type of Cadillac benefits that are contrary to what you get in the public, too. So our boss, the ones that pay our bills. So what I'd like the city manager to do, too, and I'm going to be supporting this, but I'm always a little skeptical because I've seen what these reports come back as sometimes, especially when we looked at the pay and compensation. That was another rigged proposal, or rigged presentation that was put together. So on this one here, I would like us to look at what happens in the private sector. What do they get? What do people in the private sector get compared to what we get? And that's the kind of comparison I'd like them to do, not just a government-to-government, because it's the wrong way to look at things. You've got to look at our boss. What does our boss get, and what do we get? And then look at the comparison there. And I would hope that we do that. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you very much. So the motion is in favor of the proposal. That's the second. Any additional comments?
Greta Rogers.
I don't have the card, but I believe you, so please come forward and provide any comments you have.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council and attendees. My name is Greta Rogers. The reason I submitted a card on this is twofold. On page 35 of the agenda, it shows the three companies that evidently submitted bids to do this work, and it gives point scores, which to us citizens is absolutely meaningless. The highest point score won the prize. What is the amount of money each of these bidders bid? This is the way we used to judge RFQs, RFPs. This is an RFP. I want this to be returned with dollars bid, the way we've done it for years, so people have some idea of what these bidders are bidding. But also, I don't know why we have to spend five years deliberating on this. Why can't all employees pick an ACA program? It's open to anyone from birth to 65. Then you go to Medicare, which is what I've been on for 21 years, and it works. We don't need to deliberate between this company's plan and that company's plan and blah, blah, blah. Put them on ACA, that's your choice. Now, if the city can participate in the cost with the employee, as they've been doing on the ACA, fine. But we don't need to deliberate for five years for $1,100,000. That's 220K a year. We might as well spend that 220K at the bingo hall. This is absolutely foolish.
Thank you very much, Ms. Rogers. No additional cards? Roll call.
DeCiccio.
Well, Mayor, she changed my mind on this. I was going to go along with this because I was skeptical anyways. But quite frankly, I mean, I just don't want to get sucked into spending another million dollars on a worthless report. And I saw what Siegel did last time, and they literally rigged the last report. And I know this is a different company, but I'm just going to vote no on this, Mayor, just because I saw what occurred last time.
All right. Roll call, please.
Gallego.
Yes.
Gates.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes, item passes on a seven to two vote. Next item is 24? Do you have cards on 24? Do we have a motion on 24?
Motion to approve item 24.
We have a motion and a second on 24. Jason Stokes, did you wish to provide testimony on this item?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I'm opposed to this for the sole purpose that what I see when I read this is an increase of approximately 20% from 2012, '13's costs, and then the inclusion of labor negotiations. Currently, according to the city's website, the city has 16 departments that are smaller than the law department. We have a law department, we have attorneys, you have a city attorney up here. You can tell a lot about an organization by where it spends its money. Smaller than the law department, we have equal opportunity, library, neighborhood services, housing, economic development. I don't see a need to expand our expenses in this area. We have in-house staff that can handle some things in the cases where we don't, then we can utilize those. But to increase at this time, I don't think is appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Stokes. City manager, you want to address the issue of labor negotiations, please?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So this is, simply establishes a list of qualified firms that we could select from for specific issues that may arise for the city council over the next two years. The labor negotiation services was something we requested information on from firms to evaluate, placing them on the list. However, were the city council to want to use the services of a firm to assist in labor negotiations, which we have not done before this point, I would bring that back to the council for another separate vote, because that would be a policy direction from the council that is different from what we have today. This simply provides options and several services for the council in the legal area.
Thank you very much. Ms. Barker, did you wish to provide testimony on this item, 24?
Good afternoon, Mayor and council, Diane Barker in District 7. 24 is the outsourcing for legal firms, and it also says consultants. And, you know, I just basically have a question, because I've done a little research, and I happen to have, from one of the finance and efficiency economy meetings when Gary Verberg was the city attorney, and we had insourcing risk management litigation cases. And I want to know, we've hired, apparently, two attorneys, an assistant, and this was happening since August of 2011. I want to see what kind of savings that was involved. Is there a figure of $2,235,000 for 77 cases, equalling $29,000 per case? If that is still a viable number, and if that is included in the overall cost of our legal fees that were paid outside for the last year of near $6 million? And so, you know, I think that's important if this program's still going on, if it's a benefit. And if it is, I'd like to see you raise the value of the liability above $100,000 and get these things settled at a lesser cost than the lengthy, expensive litigation, present-day courtroom.
Thank you, Ms. Barker. Leonard Clark, did you want to provide testimony on this item? You're stated as neutral.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmember. My name is Leonard Clark. I'm a resident of Phoenix. And I just want to say, though, that yes, it is rather striking. I know about the complexities. As a city manager, with speaking and hiring legal consultation lawyers, but it just seems like really exorbitant. And why spend all this money on just people who are just trying to make a living, bring enough in to support their families who work very hard, twenty-four-seven for the city of Phoenix? I'm sorry, some of my conservative friends disagree. I respect their right to disagree with me, but it's just a lot of money to be spending. Hopefully, in the future, you'll spend money on your banker friends who probably are swindling the city out. Not one of them has gone to jail. Maybe we could be the first in Phoenix to do that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Pat Vint, did you provide testimony on this item?
Yes. Good afternoon. My name is Pat Vint, again, citizen of Phoenix since 1952 after serving in Korea. But that has nothing to do with the stupidity we're talking about here on item twenty-four. Why do we have a city attorney? Why do we have assistant city chief counsel calling an assistant risk management administrator to pay another $12,500,000 out of every citizen's pocket? You people act as if money grows on trees. I don't think there's one of you here that ever, ever ran a business that knew what to do when you had to deal with a certain amount of money. Just look at page thirty-seven and thirty-eight. How many attorney firms are listed here? Do you think for a minute that I could go out and talk to any of these attorneys and hire them? They all have a conflict of interest. This is a disaster. I talked to Patrick Ravenstein this morning, and he's got a new person that's over him now, Keith Harbaugh, something like that. Going to have a meeting with him. But this is a major disaster. Development Services, I've told you before, and now you say in the new city guidelines, I can't repeat anything. That is a disaster in itself. You people ought to be in jail, probably prison. I would like for you to be in Sheriff Joe's jail. That's where you all belong. But this is a disaster. I should be able to hire an attorney or do it myself, and I think I'm going to have to do that because attorneys are expensive. And you can't find a lawyer anymore. There was a time when the lawyer, law business, was a wonderful thing. But now they're all attorneys because they've turned on us. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vint. Louis Schmidt, did you have testimony on item number twenty-four?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Vint, for your service. This is the last item I will speak on, so I'm sorry to have to take so much time from the public. But I wasn't going to speak on this item, because I understand the need to protect the city, you know, to protect the city and the citizens from, sometimes there is frivolous lawsuits. So I'm not here to speak about, you know, particularly about this item. But, you know, if we didn't have good members on the council, like we just voted on the safety issue a couple items ago, what would happen if we didn't have proper training? Because when accidents happen, OSHA comes to the city, inspects your books, and if you don't conduct proper training, then you've neglected your duties as a city to provide safe services to the public. So it's because, so if we're not going to vote on stuff like that, then we need to increase this item, because we're going to open ourselves to a lot of litigation. So I'm glad that we have informed council members who actually understand your duties and your responsibilities to the entire community. And so if we didn't have responsible council members, then we'd have to increase this budget, because twelve point five million over two years would not be enough. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Louis Schmidt. We have no other cards on this item. Any comments from members of this council? Roll call. DeCiccio. Gallego.
Yes.
Gates.
Yes.
Nowakowski. Pastor.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton. Yes. Item passes eight to one. I believe twenty-eight is the next item. Is that correct, Mr. Clerk? Twenty-five.
Motion to approve item twenty-five.
We have a motion and a second on twenty-five. Leonard Clark, did you have comments on twenty-five? And then followed by Greta Rogers.
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. I think that what you're doing here is going to be very good. I strongly support it. And I know this is bipartisan, but when we support shelters against victims of domestic violence, we've got many people and not enough space. When a spouse has to stay in the house even when they're being beaten, and now we've seen this in our subcommittee that they've been studying with the justice folks, that what can we do to help lower the fatality rate of people dying, spouses dying because they're being beaten to death because they have nowhere else to go? I think this is a very good thing that you're doing. And even though we all have our strong disagreements, this shows the citizens that there are some things that I hope we can all agree on. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Rogers. Did you just provide testimony on this item?
Mayor and council, this is an item proposing a total of $7,750,000 in round figures to four 501(c)(3)'s for outreach, service, and assistance to people who have had unfortunate experiences, some death-threatening experiences, and do not have the resource to seek the proper help, legal, social, medical, on their own. I'm not a cold-hearted person. I know you think I am, but I'm not. I give twenty-two to twenty-five percent of my income every year to 501(c)(3) organizations. But I give it to organizations that are really doing productive, result-oriented work, and largely educational institutions. What's happened in this country is that people have lost their moral and ethical sense of right and wrong. And coddling isn't going to correct that. And giving $7,750,000, it's three dollars less than fifty, but 7.750 million is a big chunk of investment. And what is the benefit result we get from it, except for fuzzy wuzzy feel-good and I'm-so-good? Get to the root of these problems and correct them. Morals and ethics. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Rogers. All right. So the item on the table right now is item twenty-five. Ms. Rogers was kind enough to include her comments on twenty-five through twenty-eight in those comments. Do we do a motion on twenty-five already happen? Do we have a motion and a second? Oh, we need a motion on item number twenty-five, contract with Chrisless Shelter.
Motion to approve item twenty-five.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments? Council DeCiccio.
I'm going to be supporting this, strongly supporting this. I don't think the public is fully aware. I don't know where the $7 million number came from. It's only 153,000 out of 765. What it is, I mean, if you look at what's happening in the city of Phoenix, essentially, our number-one call deals with domestic violence. We have over 50,000 calls a year, per year, dealing with domestic violence. It is the number-one problem that we've got in our city that a lot of us refuse to talk about and refuse to deal with. The city of Phoenix did something unprecedented. We have literally put in place a plan, and this item twenty-five, and I believe it's twenty-eight, yes, fall in line with the plan that we put in place, I believe, two years ago, to not only address, but find ways to try to end domestic violence in our community. When you've got individuals in our community that have nowhere to go, nowhere to go, generally, it's women, children, they have no place to go. At some point, I believe that we have a social, and I think we have a moral responsibility to find a way to take care of them. I can't imagine what it would be like to have no place to go if you had children, you know, that you were carrying with. A lot of these organizations do an incredible job. They protect those women. They protect those families from people that are literally out to hurt them. And they give them a place to go. So the amount of money that we give these nonprofits is so small compared to what they really need. And it's really a point where I've had an issue, too, is that if we're going to be doing these things, the best thing we can do is help those nonprofits. Because if you give us the money, we're not going to spend it right. But if you give the money to a nonprofit, you're going to be a lot better off than giving it to the government. Because if you're talking about wasting of monies, it occurs at the government level. It doesn't happen at the nonprofit. They work for virtually nothing. I'm going to be strongly supporting these items. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, councilmen. Councilman Gallego, please.
I also will be strongly supporting this item, which is, as Councilman DeCiccio managed, $153,000 annually for Chrisless Shelter to provide emergency shelter and transitional housing services. Women who are victims of domestic violence, if they are not in emergency shelter, our police will be the other source of funding to keep them safe. And giving them a safe place, I think, lets us allow our officers to spend their resources elsewhere. So I think this is a fiscally responsible item, and I guess I was surprised to see applause for voting against domestic violence shelters.
Thank you very much, councilman. Any other comments? Roll call. DeCiccio.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Gates.
Yes.
Nowakowski. Pastor.
Yes.
Waring. Williams.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton. Yes. So that's unanimous on item twenty-five. Item twenty-six is contract with CAS. We do have cards on this proposed contract with Central Arizona Shelter Services. Leonard Clark, are you, you're in favor of the item? Did you wish to provide testimony?
Mayor, hopefully, there, I mean, in the future, too, when you folks are doing this, I strongly support what you're doing. A group of people, the acronym is MASH. I'm not always part of that organization, but they've been out there advocating with all of you. You've been listening. This shows that you're listening. We have a long ways to go. Whether you're conservative or liberal, you can look at it from both points of view. When somebody's out on the street, especially in Phoenix, Arizona, when it's 110 degrees, potentially fatal situation, they need a place to go. And I think that you're responding. I appreciate your working with Maricopa County and particularly, can't think of his name right now, but on the Board of Supervisors. So please continue to do this. People have been worried that there was going to be a closing of the shelter, and we need this. Because if they're not in the shelter, these people without homes, which could be all of us, then they are out on the streets, and that's not a good situation. So you know that I criticize you guys, and I will in the future, you know, as a citizen. But what I think you're doing right now is the right thing. I hope, you know, we're not like some places where they cheer when, you know, say, let them die, let them die, like they did at a recent convention. I think that in Phoenix, we actually care about human beings. If they've got no home or shelter, we want to do something about it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Clark. Mr. Vint, up to two minutes on this item.
Yes, I am Pat Vint again. This item, twenty-six, Arizona Shelter Services. Usually, what you'll find is, these people that are creating all these problems, they're never held accountable. They threaten their wives. They threaten their kids. Wives threaten their husbands, and nothing happens. They say we can't do anything till they do it. Isn't that amazing? So what if I said, which I did here a time back, and I got escorted out because I was going to take care of a whole bunch of you? I was escorted out by Shelley, and I wrote a report. Then they sent out a giant of a man, Fred Santos, came all by himself. He said, "I'm not afraid of you. See this big gun? I'll shoot your ass." Well, anyway, I've been trying to talk to him ever since. But what you got to do, you got to start thinking. Just because you're a councilperson or a mayor or the city attorney with 45,000 assistants, but you've still got to hire four pages of outside attorneys to help you, what did you go to school for? You must have went to ASU, where he doesn't know nothing. Give Hillary and Hillary 500,000, not his money, our money. So I'm damn pissed off, and I'm getting more pissed off by the second. Sorry for that comment, but that's what happens when you get no response from anybody. I've been requiring and asking for something to be put on an item about my property, John's property, other people that I know in the city of Phoenix, that I can't repeat their name because they, please, don't get me involved. They will destroy me like they're trying to destroy you, talking about me. I'm not going to be destroyed. I can take care of myself, and I don't give a damn how many police you send after me because they're all my friends.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your testimony. Central Arizona Shelter Services is not a domestic violence shelter. It's a shelter for homeless individuals seeking shelter. In favor of the item, available to speak if requested, our former colleague, Councilmember Craig Trippkin. Good to see you. It's up to you. Do you wish to speak? No. He's silenced. All right. Are there any other cards on this item? Do you have any comments from members of the council regarding a contract with Central Arizona Shelter Services? Councilwoman Williams.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm very supportive of this item. CAS has been a savior to many people for decades and has done an excellent job. They never have enough money. They never have enough room. They just have an overpopulation to deal with. They deal with homeless men, women, and families. And I applaud them because they have really been aggressive, working with the county, with other cities, and through the homeless coalition. So I want to thank them for what they do for us, because I know in my district, I have homeless people living on the street. We would have them everywhere with no services. Crime would go up. It would be a very miserable situation for them and for us. So you provide a very valuable service. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Williams. I should also note that Greta Rogers had already provided testimony in opposition to twenty-six. Councilman DeCiccio, I think when she said seven million, I think she was adding up the total budget for twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, reference to the human service and social service providers. That would be the beneficiaries of these agreements with the city of Phoenix. We need a motion on item twenty-five. Councilwoman Williams, do you want to make a motion on twenty-five?
I would move approval.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? A second from the vice mayor? Roll call. DeCiccio. Gallego.
Yes.
Gates.
Yes.
Nowakowski. Pastor.
Yes.
Waring. Williams.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton. Yes. Next item on the agenda is item number twenty-seven, as it relates to the Watkins Emergency Shelter Contract and Increase Funding. Do you have any cards on item number twenty-seven? All right. Ms. Rogers had already provided her testimony on twenty-seven in opposition to the proposed emergency shelter contract with Watkins. Do you have any comments from members of this council? Roll. We need a motion.
Motion to approve item twenty-seven.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Roll call. DeCiccio. Gallego.
Yes.
Gates.
Yes.
Nowakowski. Pastor.
Yes.
Waring. Williams.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton. Yes. That item passes unanimously. Item number twenty-eight is the proposed renewal of our contract with the Arizona Coalition to End Sexual and Domestic Violence. Ms. Rogers already gave her testimony in opposition to that contract. Mr. Vint, did you just provide testimony on item number twenty-eight, our proposed contract with the Arizona Coalition to End Sexual and Domestic Violence?
Yes, I am Pat Vint again, and it'll be again, again, and again as long as I live. Sometimes sooner or later, you're going to have to be accountable. This is sick. 200,000, up to 600,000 for sexual violence. All you have to do is when somebody makes a threat, which I can make a threat against all of you, they won't do a thing. They can't do anything because I didn't do it yet. That's awful. You have to be accountable and responsible for your life. You can't be picking on your wife. You can't be picking on your kids, knocking them upside the head, throwing them out of the house, not expecting them to have a place to live. Maybe they were smart alecks, but a parent knows how to take care of smart alecks. All you got to do is go to a Catholic school sometime and get taught by a nun. And they're so mean, I was told, because he never got none. That makes them damn mean. How do you like that?
That's enough.
You don't like that. Well, there's not a damn one of you here that's got the gonads or what the hell you want to call them to talk back. I'm insulting you.
Mayor, do we?
And it says in the city council, "Way to talk to the city council is make you mad, and then you will respond." So respond, please.
Vint, you need to stay on the topic, and that is whether you support or oppose the proposed renewal of the Arizona Coalition to End Sexual and Domestic Violence contract. That is the item at hand.
Certainly, I approve it. But you're going to have to do something to stop it. You set up there, you think you're a bunch of kings and queens. You have no idea how to run anything. You can't even run a Sheraton Hotel down here and make a profit. The city sells DeCiccio down there.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Vint. Do we have a motion on, do we have a motion already on twenty-eight? We need a motion on item number twenty-eight.
Motion to approve item twenty-eight.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any comments from members of this council? Roll call. DeCiccio. Gallego.
Yes.
Gates.
Yes.
Nowakowski. Pastor.
Yes.
Waring. Williams.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton. Yes. Next item on the agenda is item number twenty-nine. Vice mayor, do we have a motion on item number twenty-nine?
Motion to approve item twenty-nine. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do you have any cards on twenty-nine? Roll call.
Mayor, just a quick question.
Oh, I'm Councilman DeCiccio. I apologize. Go ahead.
Now, my understanding is that we were going to be asking for a continuance on twenty-nine. Is that correct, or is that just the approval of the project?
If you want to ask for, do you want to ask for a continuance?
No, 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 no. I'm fine with it. I just wanted to make sure. I was told earlier that there would be a question to continue. I'm fine with it.
Okay, that's different information than I have. But if somebody wants to ask for a continuance, we certainly can. But...
Mayor Councilman DeCiccio, the item is not requesting a continuance or withdrawal. It is amending the agreement to extend the time.
Okay, the deadline. And then... And then, oh, for just 90, okay, just the extension of the deadline then. That's what I wanted to make sure. And then the second part of it deals with, this is not, this is an approval of the project, but not of the, basically the Jiplit, correct?
Mayor, Councilman DeCiccio, Paul Blue has been leading the efforts on this project. I'll let him describe.
All right, Mr. Blue.
I love the project.
Ms. Mackey.
I just don't like the text giveaway part.
Mayor, Councilman DeCiccio, this project was approved by the city council earlier last year. There were some challenges related to a variety of issues in terms of alley abandonments and some other development-related issues. All we're asking for is extension of time. We're asking for no other approval beyond what the council already adopted.
Thank you, Mayor. That's it. I just wanted that clarification. Thank you, Paul.
All right, thank you. Any additional comments or questions from members of the council? Roll call.
DeCiccio.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Gates.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Pastor.
Yes.
Waring.
Oh.
Williams.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes, item passes on an eight to one vote. Next item is item number 31, is that right? 36, I apologize.
Motion to approve item 36.
We have a motion on 36. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Ms. Barker, did you provide testimony on item number 36? Up to two minutes.
Yes, Mayor and Council, Diane Barker. And I'm going to be neutral on this and I'll give you a kudo is that I've been marking that sometimes that way and it's official. The clerk has a for, against, or a neutral, so thank you. But I did talk to Aviation and I do understand this is a contractor that the city has had on as a lobbyist for various issues, transportation for one, and they're in Washington, D.C. And so we're adding 100,000 to their contract so that they can get involved with the FAA legislations. And I know it's probably all come about because of the flight plan that has been diverted over the FO story. So I'm just saying, hey, you've got an attorney on this and now we've got a lobbyist and they're supposed to be working together to the effort to get it colluded and don't draw it out. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Barker. That's the only card on this item. We already had a motion, we had a second. Comments by members of this council? Council Waring, please.
Thank you, Mayor. So I voted against the contract with, I guess, the original lobbying contract with Holland and Knight. We have an original contract with them. Normally I vote against all the lobbying contracts. In this case, obviously, it's a special circumstance where adding on, correct city manager for the aviation issue, which I do think has merit. So I am going to vote for this, which is different than I voted on the original contract. Just wanted to explain that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. No other comments? Roll call. Oh, I'm sorry, Councilman Gallego, did you have something? I apologize.
Wanted to say, I agree, thank you for, Councilman Waring, for voting on this. I think it is good that we are pursuing multiple strategies on this issue. I think it is wise not to put all of our eggs in one basket and so we are more likely to succeed if we have continued efforts on multiple fronts. So I'll be supporting this item.
Thank you very much. Roll call.
DeCiccio.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Gates.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes. Next item on the agenda, Vice Mayor?
37. Motion to approve item 37.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. I'm going to have the Vice Mayor lead the meeting. I have to leave, but I'll be appearing telephonically for the remainder of the meeting. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thanks, Mayor. Okay, we have a motion and a second. We have three cards and all marked in opposition. We'll start with Mike Reynolds. Sir?
City Council, Mayor, City Manager, Mr. Valenzuela, I am Mike Simpson. Mike Reynolds had to leave. You have three cards there on 37.
Mike Simpson, Mike Reynolds, and Mary Hubbard, so we'll be speaking for all three.
Yeah, I am Mike Simpson. Mayor Hubbard, raise your hand.
Okay.
And Mike Reynolds had to leave.
Okay.
But all three of us is here to speak on item 37, which is the transit contract. I am with Simpson Walker Contracting, which was a subcontractor that bided on that project. And we were disqualified. And the reason why we were disqualified is because it said that we didn't reach out to disadvantaged businesses. And the two people that was here today, Ms. Hubbard and Mr. Reynolds, he represents H&R Electric. Both firms are certified minority firms with the city of Phoenix, small disadvantaged business. Their proposals were inclusive of our proposal that we submitted. So there is a serious problem here and it's been a wrong committed for those people to disqualify our bid, take us out of the running for the project because they said that we didn't reach out to minority firms. We had minority firms submit a bid with our bid when we submitted the proposal. What we're asking today is that the city council not vote to pass this contract at this time. We have filed a suit, not a suit, we have filed a complaint with the Transit Department, U.S. federal government, and also U.S. Highway Department, and with the EEOC office here in Phoenix. So the city council will ask to postpone this until your next meeting.
Vice Mayor, members of the council, this is new information to me, so I would suggest a week, I would suggest continuing this item to June 17th in order for us to talk with him, also to get some information back to you and consider it in two weeks.
I would like to continue item 37.
Second.
We have a motion to continue to June 17th?
Yes.
We have a second?
The 17th of June or July?
June.
June, June 17th. The motion is to continue this item to June 17th, giving staff, city managers designate an opportunity to sit down with you and to go through the process. And we'll see it back on June 17th. This passes?
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Any further discussion?
There were other items that we continued from the past and we are going to get an update on that also. Okay, okay.
Okay, you have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passing unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Simpson. All right, next item is item 40.
Move approval?
Approval. Oh, second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. We do have some cards here. Ms. Greta Rogers. Okay, she was marked in opposition. The next item is Diane Barker.
I'm sorry? Yes, yes, ma'am. Okay, thank you, Vice Mayor and Council, Diane Barker, District 7. And I ride a bicycle and I love it and I get all around the city, so I'm in favor of bicycles. But on this program, I was going to a meeting and who would be coming behind me on one of those grid bicycles was Rick Namark. And he chided me for not wearing a helmet. And I said, "Yeah, you know, it broke and, you know, boy, the city just doesn't want to pay me, so I don't have a helmet." But anyway, he said that, oh, I think this is what he said, thought I heard, it made me recognize that this program doesn't supply helmets and somebody that comes that needs a bicycle, what are they, we're not into the time now where we have the magic helmet that just folds up like a little rain hat into your purse. And so we have this program that you're wanting to extend that if you look at it, does it really have the safety factor and are we going to convey this message to the youth that it's okay not to wear a helmet, okay? And the other thing is, is it's hot here. What are we going to do with all these really hot, hot bicycles that are really out in the open? We have them, you know, we really need to look at some way that we have some coverage. So I would say, do not expand this program right now, even though I'm in favor typically of it. And I'd like to see a report on the usage and the monies that are generated and does the city get anything? We're expending for this. Do we get anything out of it? It's a public-private partnership? I mean, we should have this more than just for show. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barker. I do have several cards wishing to not speak but marked in favors. Shannon Scatari, Dorina Bustamante, William McComas, Sylvia Yerutia, and Suzanne Pfister. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Councilman Gates?
Thank you, Mayor. Question for staff. Setting aside the whole grid share program, the bike share program, if for some reason it were to end, what would happen to these bike racks?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilman Gates, Deputy City Manager Rick Namark has been overseeing this program along with our street transportation staff. So, Rick?
Mayor, members of the council, these racks are useful both for the grid program and for the general public, and they'll be marked available for general public use. So if the grid program went away, they'd continue to be useful either at the location where we initially placed them, at grid stations, or we can relocate them somewhere for the general public use. And prior to this particular item, how much city money has been spent on the bike share program? Mayor, Councilman Gates, we have spent zero city dollars other than the staff time involved. Thank you.
Mayor?
Councilman DeCiccio, and we'll go to Councilman Williams. I'm always going to choose Councilman Williams.
Of course, I would too.
Sure, Councilman Williams.
I just wanted to ask staff, is this part of a contract that we previously approved?
Yes, Mayor. Members of the council, we probably could have just listed this item as a payment ordinance item, but I didn't want to. I wanted to make sure you remembered all of it because it's been quite a while since the contract was approved. When we were establishing the grid program, we did two things, and Charlene will correct me if I'm wrong. The first was set aside half a million dollars in the CIP for bike share support improvements for infrastructure or other items to support the bike share program. The council approved that allocation in the CIP. And then when we came forward with the contract, we had an agreement that we would move forward to purchase these racks, but only after six months of successful operation. We wanted to make sure the system was up and running before we invested in the system. And this is not for the ongoing operation of the system. This is a capital investment that will be beneficial to the city for the future.
And then I have a second question for legal. I thought Diane brought up a good point. By not supplying any helmets or anything like that, is there any liability or risk for the city? Do we have any signs out saying anything?
Vice Mayor, Councilwoman Williams, there is essentially assumption of the risk. These are being provided for use and so generally there should not be any liability. Although, again, consistent with city policy, we certainly encourage the use of helmets, but we're not legally liable.
Thank you.
Mayor, Councilwoman Williams, we also have city-provided bike racks at other locations on parking meter poles, for example, and so this doesn't change our liability.
Thank you.
Councilman DeCiccio?
Thank you, Mayor. As always, I always brief staff ahead of time so I don't blindside them with questioning so they're being prepared. Ray, we talked earlier today, how much money would this bring into the city of Phoenix? What's our expected return on this $125,000 investment?
Vice Mayor and Councilman DeCiccio, at this time, the operations of the vendor, and actually just to point out, John Romero is a representative of Sacquahup, he's behind me here. So right now, it's revenue neutral, so it's not making money. There is a provision in our contract that ultimately, when they reach a certain point, we would have some profit sharing and at this point, they haven't gotten to that level.
But our expectation is that we may never see the profit sharing on this thing, correct?
Mayor, Councilman DeCiccio, we never got into this to make money. We got into this to provide this transportation option for people. But ultimately, if somebody was making a ton of money on this system, we negotiated into our contract an ability to share that profit.
So, and let me just ask...
I think it's above $250,000 net.
Right, it's $250,000. And right now, it's, I don't even think it's up to 125, but that's another, that's one issue. The other deals with what percentage of these bike racks are going to be available to the private sector, not to the private sector, but to individual citizens? What percentage of that?
100, right? Mayor, Councilman DeCiccio, Charlene Reynolds from the department has been managing this contract and she's familiar with those details.
Councilman DeCiccio, when we started the conversations with Grid Bike Share to purchase these racks, we requested that they, at every station, there be two to three individual loops that are designated for public bike parking.
And how many loops do you have in a rack? Because I'll get to the bottom line on that.
Basically, it depends on, we go out and we cite each location, and so we could possibly have anywhere from seven to 15 bikes per station. So it would depend on our citing, but for each location, we have a guarantee from Grid Bikes that they will have at least two to three designated public parking.
So approximately 20% or less, I'm being very conservative, it actually could be a lot less than that, would be provided to the public with no dollars basically expected to come back to the city. So now the question I've got here is, deals with the thing that we saw at City North. It's illegal to enter into a contract where a private sector individual benefits from a contract. Just because we write a contract that looks like it's beneficial, we now have testimony showing that it is not beneficial to the public, that the public's not getting a public good out of this proportionate to the amount of money that they're putting into it. So Diane, how does this, how do you legally do this? I get the idea that somebody wants to push, I mean, when we did this original contract back then, we were promised that no taxpayer money was going to be used for it. We were told that. This is all going to be free to the public, it's going to be done that way. Now, we're coming back and you're asking for $125,000 that looks like it's basically set up to help and to give monies to a private sector company, which I believe to be illegal. How do you do that?
Mayor, Councilman DeCiccio, this is no different than providing bus service to the public or any other public service. People pay to use our buses. People are going to pay to use these bikes. The bikes are, we're not giving a rack to somebody. The rack is available for bikes that will be parked there for public use.
Rick, you're giving $125,000 to a company in order for them to be able to promote their business.
In order for us to be able to provide bike share as a transportation option for the public.
No, you're, what you're doing here is you have a private sector company benefiting from $125,000. We already have testimony that we're not expecting to see any return come back from that, that they're going to be able to use exclusively for their use. Now, if you said that this is going to be available to the public and every one of those racks are open, then you'd have a stronger argument. But you just told me that you don't. It's going to be less than 20% is going to be available to the public in an open setting. The rest of it's going to be used by a private sector company, which I don't believe to be legal. be legal. Tell me how it's legal. Tell me.
But Vice Mayor, Councilman DeCiccio, under the Turkin decision, basically, the analysis of the gift clause is that there has to be essentially a direct benefit. In this case, there is a direct benefit of public use of both the racks and making them available, the bicycles actually available. So it's a slightly different analysis, and you have to look at the proportionality. And in this case, there is a public benefit, and so preliminarily, my, my analysis is this would be a lawful agreement.
But in the Turkin case, didn't you have a proportionality issue dealing with parking in a parking garage? And the courts literally said that that was not legal.
Yeah.
And it didn't show the proportionality here either. You got $125,000 going in, and the public's gonna be able to have access to less than 20%.
So Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilman DeCiccio, what we'll do is, I mean, I'd be happy to sit down and consult with you after, but in a public meeting, I will tell you that my analysis is, is this agreement is lawful under Turkin, and I can certainly provide you detail.
But I'm gonna do this in a public meeting, because for a reason, as I wanna get this on the record, Dan. Show me where the proportionality is, when we have staff saying that we don't expect any return on this thing. We have $125,000 going out, and only 20% or less is gonna be used by the general public. Explain to me the proportionality of this legally, in a public setting, because the public is here, it's their money, they have a right to know this.
Can I try?
Well, no, I'd like to have staff answer that, please. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, I apologize.
I'm gonna, so that's-
After that, I have a motion to continue that I'd like to make, so that we can go into E-session to have this discussion, which is a good discussion.
Okay, got, so let's, let's let, let's let Dan Brown have an opportunity to answer, and I wanna get over to Councilwoman Gallego, and we'll go over to the motion.
Again, Vice Mayor, Councilman DeCiccio, I'd be happy to sit down and discuss this in E-session with you, so we can discuss it. This is a complex, the Supreme Court in Turkin issued a complex analysis, and, and it is correct direct proportionality, so I'd be happy to discuss this.
But Mayor, I have to, I have to push back on that, because this is a public setting for a public vote. To deal with this behind closed doors, it's already been discussed out.
Back to the public setting, Councilman.
Right, and that's why that needs to be discussed here, why they need to prove to me and others why this is a legal maneuver for the city of Phoenix. And this goes back to the other contracts that we've talked about in the past. They get set up in a way that I don't believe to be legal, and they get rigged. And I want the staff to explain to me how this is legal. That's all I need them to do.
Mayor, Mayor, members of the council, maybe I can just broaden the discussion here. This is not about purchasing bike racks for which 20% of them are used for the public. This is the city's agreement to purchase bike racks for the expand, for the, for the entire system. That was part of our agreement when we started Bike Share, was the city was gonna invest up to $500,000 in infrastructure and equipment for the system, for the entire system, for the, so that the public can have a system to use. That was set up at the very beginning of the contract.
Rick, the public is not getting this benefit. You're giving it only less than 20% of these dollars. I just don't believe that it's legal.
Every member of the public is, is out there using these bikes today, just like they use our bus system that we invest money in, just like they use our street system they invest money in. It's no different.
But we own those. We own the streets, we own the buses, and that's legal.
And we will own these bike racks, too.
Thank you, thank you, Rick. Councilwoman Gallego?
Thank you. Some, recently in our downtown, we have lost some businesses because we didn't have enough parking for their employees. And we've also had a lot of great success stories. So in the warehouse district, we have employers like R&amp;R Partners and Web PT who have come in to warehouses, but in areas where there aren't a lot of parking, and they have fairly intensive, employee-intensive footprints. So a lot of people working in spaces where there used to be almost no people. And we've had some pretty intense challenges with parking for those folks, but one of the solutions that really saved us a lot of money was having more bike facilities, and some of those companies have actually sponsored these facilities, because it really alleviates a lot of the crunch and saves both the company and the taxpayers' money. A lot of this workforce in the warehouse district is millennials who are excited about living downtown and biking to work, and this really has been a tool that has helped us save a lot of money on the streets and infrastructure side. So I think it's, it's been a success, and I can't, as I would guess the councilperson who's been to the most bicycle citizen subcommittee meetings, I mean, we get all the time requests for more bicycle parking in the areas where we are putting these facilities. So this is something, for years, we've been hearing about more bike racks, so I think it is a smart investment, and one that really does serve our public good.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Let's get a motion to, I'll get over to Councilman-
Yeah, I, I think that Councilman DeCiccio has raised some important questions, and so based upon that, and we haven't had an E-session on this, I'd make a motion to continue to, to receive that legal advice.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
And this is a follow-up.
We need a continuance date.
June 17th, or July 1st would be the next available meeting.
June 17th, okay.
And we have an executive session on June the 9th.
Okay.
And Vice Mayor-
So the, the continuance would be for June 17th. We have a motion and a second. Councilman DeCiccio?
Look, I am a huge supporter of the biking community, for those of you that know that. First of all, my, my, a biker, not one of those bikers, but a biker. She bicycles. But the question is whether or not this is, setting this up as a deal for a private sector company, giving them taxpayer money in order for them to benefit from that, and not getting a proportionate share of return on that. That's what this is about. It's not about the feel-good part about the biking community. I love that. Okay, believe me, if I could ride a bike, I would. And I think it's fantastic, and thank you for doing business in the city of Phoenix. But we shouldn't be, we were promised early on, for those of us that remember, remember the Purple Bikes? For those of us, I grew up here in Phoenix, I mean, they had the Purple Bikes, an abysmal failure, failed, because the city of Phoenix dumped in tens of thousands, if not hundreds of thousands of dollars into the program, and we were told upfront that no taxpayer money is gonna be used in this. And now they're rigging this proposal here in order to benefit one private sector company. It is not legal to do that. You cannot give taxpayer monies to a private sector company. It's not legal. The Supreme Courts have ruled on that.
To be fair, Councilman, this is, this is gonna be continued. I think it's unfair to say that what was on the table today is illegal.
Well, it is.
Okay.
It's the courts have ruled on this.
All right, so, so the motion, I disagree, but that's, we do have a motion to continue this item to June 17th. There is an E-session for June 9th. It'll come back. We have a motion and a second. This is a voice vote. All in favor, say aye. I think, we have one in opposition here, so motion carries. Eight, two, one. Okay. All right. Okay, wait, hold on, I just, I wanna mention, is we have Mr. Neymar at the table here, and I, I wanna, this is Rick Neymar, Deputy City Manager, Rick Neymar's last meeting here with the city of Phoenix after 147 years of service. After 29 years of service at the city of Phoenix, and Rick, you, this is your last meeting. And you know what? Isn't this perfect? We're continuing item, and, and I don't know why you fought so hard to not continue it. I mean, holy, you're not gonna be here.
Mayor, council members, I'll be back and fill out a card on June 17th. And, and I won't be paid, so I'll be able to, uh-
With a helmet, Ray.
Give you my opinion.
With a helmet.
Rick, you've done a fantastic job for the city. You deserve a lot of accolades for all the work that you put here. I mean, we've been very blessed as a city to have you here, Rick. You've been fantastic to work with. Most fair person I've ever met. Congratulations, Rick. You've done a great job.
The utmost respect, Rick. Thank you so much for your friendship, for your service. I've, I've only been in office for about three and a half years, and it seems like every major issue, and this is saying a lot, because there's so many people that work on all of these issues, whether it's something like transportation, or pension reform, or, you know, it just doesn't matter. It seems like you are in the forefront, you are educating us on it, you're educating, certainly me, you're educating the public on it. Your heart is certainly in the right place, and we are certainly a better city because of you. 29 years of service, you walk down anywhere through the city, you ride a bike in the city, you take light rail, you do whatever, and, and you can see Rick Neymar's fingerprints on it. So God bless. Thank you for your service. All right.
Thank you, Rick.
Thank you for your service.
Okay, we are on item 41. Okay, you have a motion for item 41?
Move the symbol.
We have a motion and a second. We do have one card, Ms. Greta Rogers, who I believe is not here, correct?
Right.
Okay, marked neutral on her card. Uh, any questions, comments by my colleagues? This is a voice, or a roll call. Okay, roll call.
DeCiccio, Gallego.
Yes.
Gates. Noakowski. Pastor.
Yes.
Waring. Williams.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes.
Motion carries eight, zero. I believe the last item on the agenda is item 46. I'm sorry. Okay, we, we can entertain a motion, 46 through 49. Do you have a motion?
I would make the motion 46 through 49, noting that 51 has been withdrawn.
Thank you. Looking for a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any comments, questions? Roll call.
Yes.
Gates. I'm sorry. Noakowski. Pastor.
Yes.
Waring. Williams.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes.
Okay. Vice Mayor, members of council, if I could clarify, item 51 is just to withdraw from the agenda. I just want that noted for the record. Thank you, Ellen. Item 51 is to withdraw from the agenda. Okay. Item 50 is public hearing. Item 51, do we need a motion to withdraw from the agenda?
I said, I noted that when I made the motion.
Okay, we will, uh-
So we, okay, cards first. Why don't you do, negative cards first?
So, so we have to open the public hearing?
Yes.
Okay, item 50, we are in the public hearing, 44th Street and Peakview Road. We have several cards on this item, and the request is to go to the cards first. Okay. The first card, Adam Arkells. I can't, I'll have to. Yeah. Mr. Arkells, I apologize, I apologize. I'm gonna go, I'm gonna ask for staff presentation first.
Vice Mayor, members of council, this is a 7.25 acre rezoning request from S2 and RE35 to R110 to allow single-family residential development for a parcel located at the southeast corner of 44th Street and Peakview Road. The Desert Village Planning Committee approved the request by a vote of six to one with modified staff and additional stipulations. The planning commission recommended approval on March 10th via a vote of six to zero. Since that time, the applicant has met with the neighbors, dropped the density from 32 to 19, as well as increased the open space on the project from 14% to 21.8%. They've increased the width of some of the open space, they've reduced the number of lots along the north and the east property line, limited lots along the east property line. They've also agreed to an average lot size of 10,142 square feet, and a minimum lot size of 9,937 square feet. They did also increase the lot width from 55 and 60 to 75 feet. With that, staff is recommending approval of this request per a memo that was handed out earlier today from dated June 3rd, that outlines the new stipulations based upon the agreement the applicant has made with staff. I would also note for the record that a three-quarter vote is no longer required for this item because of the agreements made by the applicant and the neighbors. Those neighbors who originally submitted their signatures to force a three-quarter vote have rescinded those signatures at this time. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, thank you, Ellen. Okay, now we'll go ahead and go to the cards. We have staff presentation, uh, thank you for the staff presentation. First card is Adam Arkells, followed by Kelly, is it Bain?
Bear.
Bear? Okay, thank you. Sir?
Actually, based on what, excuse me, good afternoon, council. Based on what was just stipulated into the record by the city, I'm actually gonna withdraw my opposition. I'm in favor of the 19-home development.
Okay, thank you, sir. Kelly Bear, followed by John May.
Good afternoon, council. My name's Kelly Bear. I bought my house, which is a two-and-a-half acre horse property in 2004, because I wanted to live in a rural area. I, since then, in 2011, purchased the property next door, because I want to build another house and expand my area with my horses. And then I just went through a very grueling county compliance agreement to make sure that the previous homeowner's stuff has all been fixed, so that I can maintain my OR43 property there. And although I think there's a lot of things that you can fix through promises and agreements, like bringing utilities and adding green space and all of that, what you can't change is the feel of the area and the value in living there. It's a rural area, it's a horse area, and adding that kind of density takes that away. It takes away the dollars' value to people who want to live that way, they will simply move to other areas, and it takes away just the feel of it. You can move to the beach and live in a shoebox and still be at the beach, and still feel like you're at the beach. You cannot live in a shoebox in a rural area and still feel like you're in a rural area. It just doesn't have that same feel. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Kelly Bear, John May. Okay. Ray Jean Prather?
Um, I'm good.
Okay. Okay, you just wanna mark, mark opposition, do not wish to speak, and the same would go for Mr. John May, correct? Okay. Carol Wyman? Did I get that right?
Hoover.
Wow, as well. Would you like to speak, ma'am? Would you like to speak, or just, you're marked opposition? Okay. Haley Dial.
I'm here.
Okay, marked opposition. Larry Hancock, very nice handwriting. Marked opposition.
Is the font large?
It's just really neat. It's great. Marked opposition. Lori Hancock, I can tell Lori probably wrote both. Marked opposition. Alice Blazer. Would you like to speak, ma'am? Please. Randy Schreiber is the next speaker.
Alice, do you have a minute?
I won't need them. Good evening, and thank you for listening to me. Like the previous speaker, I moved to this community, I'm two blocks away from this proposed development. I moved here 25 years ago from Southern California, because I had horses and dogs, and I watched the developers move the horses out of Orange County in Southern California, so that there was no place to keep them anymore. And so I moved over here, been very happy here for 25 years, and now I'm, feel like I'm starting to see the beginning of the same thing happening, where the developers come in and our lifestyle goes away. It's a rural community, it's been very stable for a long time. I don't think this development keeps with the ambiance or the feel of the rural area. It's right in the middle of the, of a little rural area where everybody has horses. I didn't oppose the development on Cave Creek and Peakview, or the Saddlewood development on Dynamite and 44th Street, because they were sort of next to major streets. This one is not. It's nestled right in the middle of the community, and I don't believe that our roads in that area can handle the traffic. There's already a great deal of increased traffic from the Toy Barn and the Goddard School that were built out near Cave Creek Road. I'm also concerned about changing the flow of the water. There's washes that go through that area, and we've already had issues with flooding from trying to change the water flow through Dynamite Park, going across Dynamite Street, and flooding out a horse facility on the south side of Dynamite, and I'm really concerned about- And, um, I'm really concerned about, um, uh, changing, uh, where the water goes. I think there'll be flooding issues. And, uh, but my basic, um, opposition to it is that it's gonna change the entire, um, ambiance of the community. I think the zoning the way it is now, um, is fine. If they wanna develop it into acre, acre and a quarter properties, that would stay with, um, the way the community is at the moment. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mrs. Blazer. Thank you, Ms. Blazer. Uh, Randy Schreiber, followed by Lana Cullen.
Okay, thank you. I'm a owner of an acre and a half in that area, also in horse property. I am downstream from what I fear will be a flooding situation. I've not had flooding at our home. Uh, it's on a wash, uh, in- in the fifteen years I've been there, even with the worst. Uh, but noting what has happened in other areas, uh, as a result of the new development that's gone on, uh, I fear that my home on two-eight-two-two North Forty-third Street will end up flooded. Uh, also, I- I will, uh, add that that traffic in there, uh, really narrows down, uh, to- to not even two cars being able to pass in certain areas. Uh, I don't believe that's proposed to, uh, change if the additional houses are in there. Uh, and I'm also afraid that if this is approved, then that will just domino effect and any other proposal with more homes on purch- on- on land that is purchased will just keep going and we will be driven out. That's my fear.
Thank you, sir. Do we have, uh, Lana Cullen?
Vice Mayor, I have a question for staff. To address that issue about the flood, is there something in the plan for a retention area of water or...
Vice Mayor, uh, and Councilman Noakowski, yes. They're required to meet all their onsite retention requirements and not contribute any additional flow, uh, downstream. You see on the site plan that shows over here, they have open space retention areas over here and also down here along the south side of the property. I would note that, uh, even in the extreme of the extreme weather events that we've had, we have not had flooding instances in- in flat parts of the city. Where we have seen it, it's been more issues in mountainous areas, uh, where we've had those up in, you know, the New River, Tatum or Tremontto area and then some down around South Mountain. There have not been any that I'm aware of in these flatter, uh, areas.
Thank you. Oh, you're done?
So, Ellen, we just talked about, uh, flooding issues up there at another, uh, another property. Uh, I think you were in that meeting. So, the Army Corps of Engineers is the ones who decide. Is that a fair statement, the risk of a flood from a wash?
Uh, so, yes, Vice Mayor, Councilman Waring, uh, in this area up here, the Army Corps of Engineers, uh, decades ago dedi- um, delineated, uh, four oh four washes, which are navigable waters of the U.S. And over time, as development comes in, they have to address those issues, uh, with the Army Corps of Engineers as projects develop. In this case, I don't believe they're impacted by a four oh four wash, uh, designated in this area like that other site was, uh, at that meeting that we had.
And the four oh four wash is a bigger wash that, that might arguably do damage to a house? Is that a fair way for a layman to characterize it? I mean, or how would you put it if someone deals with that more directly?
Again, I would characterize it as it's something that the Army Corps of Engineers, uh, has- has designated, that it might have some potential for that. Some of them are quite small, uh, other ones are larger.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, so, Ms. Cullen? Followed by Cecilia Glittenberg.
Yes, thank you, uh, Mayor and City Councilmen for allowing us to voice our concerns. Uh, my name's Lana Cullen. My husband, James, and I own five acres on Dynamite at the southeast corner of Forty-fourth and Dynamite within sight of the new, uh, or the proposed, um, subdivision. Um, I guess I would start by saying we were brought to the valley, um, thirty-eight years ago and purchased our property, uh, while my husband was an instructor pilot out at Luke Air Force Base in F-four's, uh, at the end of our three-year normal duty. We made the determination that we love this area so much and we did have two children by then, that I would stay here and raise colts and kids, which was our avocation, was raising horses, and, uh, he'd finish up his career. So, we feel like we have more than just money involved in the property that we own. We have fifteen years of separation as a family other than home on leave. That's our decision to do that. Uh, just like you to know what kind of dedication we had to this area and our love for Arizona and the Phoenix-Scottsdale area. Uh, of course, we were in county only. We were, as a matter of fact, I believe we were the third house on Dynamite Boulevard. And it was a cow trail that was kept open by a friendly farmer most of the time and you had to pull off in the desert for one vehicle to pass another. So, we've seen incredible growth and incredible changes over the thirty-eight years that we've lived there. What concerns us at this point and the reason we are so opposed to this particular development and any others that might come along where they have the intention of building homes so close together that a grown man can't fall down between them? Um, that- that really strikes through the heart of why we would live that far out, suffer the inconvenience. And like most people, that piece of property represents the bulk of the legacy that we will leave our children. Are very concerned about the devaluation because once you have everybody complaining about flies around you, you'll be gone if you have the livestock regardless of who is there first. So, I just, I beg you, I implore you to please consider there's more than money at stake here and, um, I appreciate your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Cecilia Gettenberg, Glittenberg?
Yes, hi, Cecilia Glittenberg. And I've lived in the area for, um, close to thirty years and I agree with what everyone here has said. I'm in opposition to this. Um, they've said, they've spoken what I think as well. Um, I do wanna say that at the first meeting we had in the community, um, you know, we asked for one home per acre and the- the landowner sort of said, um, there's no market for this. And so, you know, the bottom line that they're worried about is making money. Have, they have no interest in the community that we have worked hard to maintain for all these years. Uh, again, we are, you know, I would be in favor of one home per acre. This is consistent with the area. That area is not consistent, it's not Tatum Ranch, it's a rural community. Um, people ride their horses in the street, walk in the street, um, children play in the street, and we need to keep this, again, rural. As has been mentioned, the traffic is, um, going to be really bad with the two new developments going on in the corners of, uh, Cave Creek and, um, Peakview and Dynamite and Forty-fourth Street. It's just ridiculous that this area, this, um, subdivision is being proposed for this middle of this rural community. So, I ask you also to please consider, um, what we all have worked so hard to maintain for over these years. Thank you.
Mark the pose, wishing to not speak, Kristy Grigg, Ricky Lee Cox. Sorry? Of course. Uh, Kristy Grigg? Okay. Uh, let me, let me, uh, you can come on up, I'm gonna read the rest of the cards. Susan Russell, Judy Cox, Donna Ferraro, Rose Angelita, Scott Collins, Alan Kirk, Monica Kirk, Don Souther, Cheryl Bass, James Cullen, wishing to... Scott Collins and Lynn Andrus. Uh, ma'am? Oh. I'm sorry, what is your name, sir? LaPapa? Jeffrey LaPapa? Yeah. Okay. You're- you're gonna, you're next, sir.
Thank you for your time and, um, forgive me, this is not my specialty, public speaking, but, um, you're hearing again and again, um, how much we value our rural living and our lifestyle with the cattle and the horses and the dogs, um, and the traffic issues. But I'm really curious, all of our community, we have moved out there, we've gone so far north to have one acre, two acres, five acres, ten acres, twenty acres. We want this lifestyle. Have any of you asked yourselves or thought about, we're fighting as a community? We've been out there for years and years and years. We haven't complained or probably fought hard for, um, changing water rights or, you know, I have my own septic. I haven't, many people have their own well. They don't, they haven't tried to change everything. When you go out there, you take it as is. You don't come in and- and argue to change the system the way it is. Here comes some developer, snags up a piece of land for a- a rock-bottom price, then they wanna came- come in and change the zoning? Take it as it is. One house per acre, don't come in and try and do nineteen or thirty or whatever. That's not the lifestyle out there. So, why are we fighting back when some newcomer came in just to make a quick buck? Then the developer's not gonna be there. They're gonna go, they're gonna make their bu- their money, leave, and the rest of us have our lifestyle changed. We've been out there. Why are we fighting back? Just something to think about. I think that- that the council should really listen to us and- and think about it. A developer shouldn't be able to just come in to a community that lives the way it does and has for so long just so that they can make a dollar and leave because we're the ones who are gonna suffer. We want the five acres, the quiet lifestyle. We didn't ask for this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Jeffrey LaPapa?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council members. Uh, my wife and I have only lived in the area for four years. We're transplants from Chicago. We searched far and wide to find a place where we would wanna settle and retire to. After three years, we found a place one block from where this monstrosity is being proposed to be built. They're building nineteen homes in an area where from Dynamite to Peakview and from down Forty-fourth and down Forty-third, where there's probably twenty acres of property, there's not even nineteen homes. On my street on Forty-third, there's tw- fifteen acres, we have seven homes. We moved there to have a lifestyle that we enjoy and that we want, not to have someone come in, spend the almighty dollar, hire a law firm that's politically connected, and get this rammed down our throat. Every neighbor that I've talked to since the beginning of this is sick and they should be, 'cause a lot of them have been there twenty-five, thirty years. I've only been there four. I hate to lose what we have and this is the first step, it's the beginning of the end, if you let this be legislated through. A developer shouldn't buy a place and then decide, oh, well, let's rezone it. Why doesn't a developer talk to all the neighbors first? Find out what the lay of the land is? He would've found out six months ago that nobody wants this. Now, he wants it and we don't. It's one against a roomful. Don't let this happen. These people deserve better. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. LaPapa. Will you please fill out just, fill out another card for the record? I couldn't find yours. Thank you, sir. All right, uh... Yes. What is your name, ma'am? Uh, actually... Okay, sure. Yeah, we wanna...
Uh, I just, my name's Donna Ferraro. I have lived in the community for ten years. Um, I agree with everything that has been previously said, but I wanna add just one more thing. I've watched Scottsdale, I grew up, I, uh, first moved to Scottsdale and I watched the horse community of Scottsdale be ruined by development. I sell houses for a living, that's what I do. I'm a realtor and I'm also a hairdresser. I talk to people all day long and I moved out to this community because we were forced out of Scottsdale because of developments. The horse community has now been pushed to the North Valley. Cave Creek is the most western town in Arizona and that is it. This has a Cave Creek address. If you kill this neighborhood, which you are doing by allowing this to happen, the Wild West will be gone. Cave Creek is the last place. Please save our community. I also have a water drainage problem. I've written to all of you. I've written, I've talked to Planning Department, I told them about my water problem. I'm the last person that receives the water in the community. And when I tell you after all the- the other two developments on the corner of Forty-fourth and Dynamite, after they were developed, I had water, uh, four hu- four-foot holes where the water was coming the four so hard that has put ruts in my property and the county won't even let me have dirt to replace it. I have to go buy dirt to replace wha- uh, the dirt that eroded. So, anyway, basically, I agree with everyone else. I did wanna compromise earlier, but when I woke up today and thought about our community being eroded with this dirt and the sand and the traffic going down these- these streets, it's an, it's an accident waiting to happen. The traffic, the streets cannot handle this development. It, and that's all I wanna say. Thank you for my time.
Thank you. Now, on the opposition, and- and I just wanna mention, uh, the parking garage calls at six o'clock to enter. You can leave any, anytime after six. It's gonna be okay for everyone else. I wanna just clarify that. So, finally, on the opposition side, I know that, you wanna do this, uh, together, Doug Farrar and, uh, Naman No? Come on up. And, uh, we're given four minutes for this one.
Oh, thank you so much and thank you.
Can I ask a question? Can we have a couple minutes from our neighbors?
I'm sorry, ma'am.
Can we have the minutes from the neighbors who don't want to speak, but they oppose?
'Cause we have a slide presentation, we'd just like to go through it real quick. Shouldn't be more than four, five minutes.
I understood, I understood that we were gonna give you two, two minutes per...
Two and two. And just if we run over a little bit, just bear with us.
Yeah, in- in all, in all fairness, we have several other cards as well, sir, so, go ahead.
Uh, first of all, I'd like to thank Jim Waring, he's done an incredible job. He's, uh, he's done a lot. I mean, the guy is just... Thank you, Mr. Waring. Uh, first of all, I have to say, we're not against development. We want development in this area. And so, we're for it, but we just want the kind of lifestyle that fits the area. And even in your general plan, it states that it must fit the characteristic of the neighborhood. And the characteristic of the neighborhood are one-acre parcels. The other major problem is the lawyer's gonna tell you, oh, it's gonna raise the value of our properties. No, it's not. These are tract homes. Every home in there in the one-acre lots are custom-built homes. These aren't tract homes, these are custom-built homes on very...
Next slide.
Very large lots. Uh, as you can see on the map, the red part indicates all the acreage properties. And we surround it more than half, I- I believe, yes, 'cause the red marks on both sides. Uh, and I'm gonna let my wife take over from here. She can have my turn.
So, this is the existing, um, lot, uh, existing development, next. With the landscaping, beautiful landscaping, beautiful view, next. With horses, um, you know, it's so peaceful, so quiet. And we have Arizona sunset that the neighbors can view.
And let me say one thing, that's the sunset that most of Tatum Ranch is gonna lose. And keep in mind, they moved there to get that. They moved here from New York, Chicago, to buy a property and hopefully you guys will protect their investment. This is their homes. They want that sunset. They bought that parcel of land because they had a view of the sunset. They faced west. Go ahead.
Next, please. The problem is the infrastructure that we have does not support high-density home. We have one single-lane road on Forty-fourth Street and Peakview Road and the road condition is so horrible, it's eroded everywhere and we have flood, uh, problem, you know, in many, in many area on Forty-fourth Street and Peakview Road. Next, please.
But one thing I wanna say, as you can see here, it is a one-lane road. You can't pass safely, I would hit his rearview mirror if I drove by him. All right? And what I'm, what we're trying to say is, that's not even a road. You know what that is? That's a top layer that Maricopa County put on and it's an inch and a half thick. Mar- ADOT says that's not even safe road. Now, the developer's gonna tell you, oh, well, I'm gonna... Now, the developer's going to tell you, oh, well, I'm going to put in a road. Yeah, they're going to put in a road in front of the development, but on the way to the road, that's what you're going to drive on, a one-lane road. Now, keep in mind, we've got kids that don't have a sidewalk to ride on. No sidewalk to ride on at all, and they're, some kid is going to get hit, or someone on a horse is going to get hit, because a lot of times, it's a lot of cactuses, the kids can't go around. And this, you guys are creating a danger in the community, and you're going to get lawsuits because you're creating this danger, because you can't just develop in front of the property, the roads in front of the property. You have to have safe roads, a two-lane safe road up and back to and from the development. Go ahead.
Next, please. Next.
You can see the flooding. It's horrible. And that's on a light rainy day. We can't even drive through there. People won't even be able to get to their new houses if you put those houses back there. That's the kind of flooding they'll get.
And this is right between the proposed development site and Saddle Good that already going on.
Yeah, the development's straight ahead. So you can see there, there's a lake there, and that's a recent light rain.
Next, please. And this is the proposed site plan, next? Next, please. A close-up, next? So why do, why do we need a general plan? We do need it to help, you know, to build, to preserve the area and the community? Next, please. And the goal is that any new, any new development that coming in, they have to fit in, they have to be compatible with the neighborhood. They have to enhance and preserve the character of the area.
Now, this is your plan. This is your plan. That's your guys' writing there. That's in your stipulation. It must fit the characteristic of the neighborhood. Tract homes don't fit custom-built homes on large lots. Tract homes, there's hardly any land around them. There's no land. It's five feet on either side. Go ahead.
Next, please. So the same thing for any, any new development or redevelopment. They have to preserve our way of life and enhance our quality of life, not destroying it or damages in any way. Next, please. And a community, they have to have the feel for the certainty, and they have to preserve their character. If they lose that, there's no community. It's pretty much, you know, then we are not human beings, because we have no character anymore. Next. And the design in the general plans speak for, speak everything that I listed here. I'm sorry, too far away, I can't even read it.
Next one.
It's in the general plan, it's for the public to look at it.
Go ahead.
So the bottom line is, what will the development do for the community once it's being built? First of all, it's going to lower the value of the homes in the area, and then it's going to lose the acreage horse property and the premium lot values. It destroys the views and the quality of life of the community. It will add more traffic, pollution, flooding, cramps, noise, and lighting. It will add more danger on the road to the horse-riding, children biking, and neighbor walking. And the infrastructure right now cannot support all of those homes coming in. And also, it will add to the list of vacant homes that already, you know, can't sell out in the area. And again, why are these 7.5 acres so important? Why these many homes? Is it because, you know, a developer that bought it so cheap from a dying man, and they want to maximize their profit? We really want to oppose to this. We totally oppose to this. Next, please. Next, please. Next, please.
That's, that's our community. I just want to tell you, you know, think about it. If you guys had a house there, and you had a horse property there for 10 or 20 years, would you like 19 homes right next to your house? And you know these people are going to complain about his horses, because Kevin Foster owns the largest parcel of land next to the property, three acres. Now, he's going to get 19, 20, 40 complaints from horse flies, horse manure. You're creating hazardous conditions, loss of value. You're going to get a ton of lawsuits. I'm telling you, people's houses are going to flood, because the flood conditions, there's no, we don't have sewer out there. We don't have a way for the rainwater to dish away. What we have is they're going to make a little pond out front, and that water's going to stay there for weeks, waiting for it to evaporate. And this happened before.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mosquitoes.
Mayor? May I ask a question?
Counselman DeCiccio.
If you could wait. I assume you're Michael's brother?
Yeah, Mike Farrar, my city councilman.
Great guy. I just saw him Friday.
Yeah, yeah, he says the same thing about you.
Yeah, he's a super-good guy. Let me ask you just a couple of questions, and let me tell you what the struggle is occurring, at least up here. I mean, I think that there's an incredible amount of sensitivity toward bringing compatible development. I mean, I think that's one of the things we do well here at the city. If you look to the east of you, it looks like the density just a lot higher than even what's being proposed here, and it does abut that. So I mean, if you're looking at what would be a struggle up here on the council, it's that we see these types of cases where we've never had this type of conflict over something like this.
Well, it's because, it's because the development has been, for 50 years, you know, one acre, one house, and now you guys want to change it, and that's, that's what's upsetting the community. I understand that the, Tatum Ranch, but see, keep in mind, you don't drive through Tatum Ranch to get to this development. You're going to drive through our neighborhood, which is horse property, and a lot of those horses are therapy horses. People ride on a one-lane street, and now you're going to increase the traffic, and these are therapy people, ride their horses for therapy, and these are disabled people, people with mental illness, dying. The only thing they have is this, to ride through this. Horse properties are the gem of Arizona. They're the gem. That's the park. That's where people, people from Tatum Ranch walk through our area to pet the horses, like my son right there. Don't destroy that. Don't, don't increase traffic. Don't make a little kid with no sidewalk to ride his bike on safely to and from home get killed because of profit.
No, I just want to follow up on that, too. I mean, I live right next to, or actually, I think my area is horse property. We don't own horses, but I think we're right in it or right next to it. So I get that. I get the discussion, but what I'm trying to get from you, though, is that, there's two things. One, that I'm going to just walk you through what I see as a struggle, and I'm going to, probably, and I'm trying to figure it out myself, too, on your end, is that, one, if just to the east of you, you've got, looks like less, I mean, a higher density just to the east of where this property is.
Right, exactly.
And that would make that compatible with that. You're saying it's not compatible with yours. I get that.
Well, because when you drive to and from this development, you're going by the acreage properties. You're not driving through Tatum Ranch to get to this area. Then I would understand.
And then one last thing, just one last thing. I mean, if, I was trying to look at a site plan over the entire area. I mean, I want to make sure that you understand, though, too, from what we'll see, too, is that this is kind of an isolated pocket on its own. The idea that it's going to bring in high density everywhere else, I didn't see any vacant areas that would allow that to occur anywhere out there. I mean, by even putting a circle that went around quite a bit. So I mean, what I want to do is just make sure that we bring it down to what it is you're discussing. I get the lifestyle, believe me.
Well, then, let me ask you this, and meet me halfway. Compromise evenly. R118 is in the middle of R10 and R135. Meet me halfway. Meet us, meet the community halfway. You're saying one side is high density, the other side is one acre. Meet me halfway in the middle. R18 zoning. Two houses per acre. R18. R18 is in between R10 and R135. That's as close as you can get. And that's fair. I'm asking you to meet me half, if this was your home, meet me halfway. Meet me halfway, all right?
Thank you, Councilman.
Oh, I love you. You've had the...
Thank, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Okay, now, the following speakers and several cards, people who wish to not speak, these are for people who are in favor. Toby White. Is Toby White here? Okay. One up. Followed by Gary Graham and Rick Newell.
Hey, please excuse my blindness if I address you incorrectly, but it's Vice Mayor, Members of the Council. My name is Toby White. I live at 4424 East Viadonna, approximately 200 feet from, from the side of the proposed development. I live in Tatum Ranch. I moved there 12 years ago, and before I moved there, I considered a lot of other areas, and one of the reasons I did move to Tatum Ranch was what I saw in the general plan and the fact that it did have a homeowners' association and that it was a master-planned And the part of the general plan that I have in front of me dates back and has been consistent since 1995, and that shows that, and this is respect, being respectful to the people on the west side of 44th Street, that somewhat makes this a little unique, is that 44th Street's a dividing line between a future plan for zero to two acres, excuse me, zero to two units per acre, and on the east, two to five units per acre. It's unfortunate that this has gotten to the point where there has been so much contention, and part of that may have been at the beginning, there was a very dense shoved-in-their-plan, and, and not usually one to use cliches or quotes, but I thought that one by George Eliot made a lot of, has a lot of applicability here, and that is, it's never too late to be what you might have been. I think the developers come a long way from the, "I can't believe you would put this in front of this" plan, to something where they've gone to, to the best of my knowledge, to all of the adjacent homeowners and asked them and tried to work towards something, as late as yesterday, to work towards something that those neighbors could be agreeable to. So I won't take much more of your time, but I think as a neighbor of this property, I can only ask that they provide us what we provide them, and that's what I've asked of the applicant and all the attorneys that have worked with him. And that was a single-story homes, next to single-story homes, and setbacks that are equal to ours, next to those homes that they back.
Thank you, Ms. White.
Thank you.
Thank you. Gary Graham, followed by Rick Newell.
Vice Mayor, Councilmen, Councilwomen. I'm here speaking for Patty Goodman. I'm Gary Graham. Patty's in the audience. She's the one that filed the protest and the appeals to get us here today, to try to work out an agreement that everybody could live with. It started out at 33 homes. It got down to 27. That's when we took it over. And it's down to 19 now, and they're all 10,000-square-foot lots. If you look at different subdivisions going in our area, down the street, there's one, and over on Cave Creek and Peak View, there's another subdivision, and all those subdivisions are 7,000-square-foot lots, maybe 7,500. So what we actually accomplished, working with Mr. Waring and Jennifer and Rose, we took an R10 and got very creative with it. I don't think you'll see too many R10 ratings, zonings with what we're getting today. Everybody that signed that petition originally in Tatum Ranch that abut the property, they all signed off on it. They're all happy with, with the project. I mean, would have rather seen one-acre horse properties in there, because that's what's there, but that's not, it's the city, and we knew that wasn't going to happen. So what we feel is there now is the best fit, 19 lots. You're not going to, we tried eight, R118, we tried R114, and we ended up with R110 with a lot of concessions, and the majority of the feedback we got, they were happy, because we were representing about 70 families in this. So I just want to thank all you, because you saw a lot of letters from us and et cetera, and personally thank Mr. Waring. He did a great job. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Rick Noel, followed by Rachel Varner.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, my name is Rick Noel. Obviously, as most of you are probably aware, this has been a somewhat difficult and almost torturous process, but it has morphed quite a bit since the initial presentation quite a number of months ago. I certainly understand the opposition. Shortly after moving here, a little over 30 years ago from Colorado, my wife and I built a, or bought a house near Tatum and Greenway, when Greenway dead-ended less than a mile away, just past Horizon High School, and Tatum stopped right at Union Hills. But at that time, we knew it was only a matter of time before growth would continue and that the road would be extended, it would be widened, and so forth. And when Greenway got to be three lanes, we just said, okay, we're out of here. So 18 years ago, we moved to Tatum Ranch. This project has been previously approved in another form. It has been greatly improved since then, and as Councilman DeCiccio pointed out, it is directly adjacent on two sides, north and east side, to a large master-planned community with over 3,400 homes that vary in lot size, from anywhere from about 4,200 square feet to over an acre. Some may say this is not a perfect project. Nothing is perfect, but I think it has come a long way. I think the developer has made a tremendous number of concessions that are in the best interest of probably both sides. You're aware of the concessions, and I think this is a realistic end result.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for the chance to speak. You know, to be perfectly, perfectly honest, nobody in our neighborhood is thrilled about this rezoning case. This has been a long, hard fight, and fortunately, the developer has reworked the first plan, which was completely unacceptable, and come up with something that I think we can at least live with. We would all prefer a one-acre, you know, one-acre lots. I just don't think that that's realistic for what the master plan for Phoenix is. I'm very proud of our neighbors. They've all come together and worked really hard to help get this accomplished. And I do want to say that whatever builder ends up with this, with this property and builds, if they do try to do amendments to the site plan or the stipulations, just that know that we, as a community, will come forward again and show up to the hearings and oppose any changes to this plan. We've worked too long and too hard to get it to at least this level, to have them come in and do any amendments later. So just, I want that on record, and that's all. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. I have several cards here wishing to not speak but are in favor, just like the last few speakers. Patricia Goodman, Mary Ellen McKeever, Alfred... Try that one. Dick Coco? Neutral, Mark Neutral, Pam Swayze. In favor, Jennifer Corin. In favor, Jen Corey. Would you like to speak? Sure. Your name?
Jennifer Corey.
Okay, Ms. Corey. And Kevin Foster. Ms. Corey, after you speak, give our applicant, Ms. Jordan Rose, an opportunity to say a few words if she would like.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Jennifer Corey. My address is 4120 East Thistle Landing in Phoenix. I'm speaking on behalf of Dr. Foster, who is unable to attend tonight. He had an emergency surgery. Dr. Foster lives directly to the south of this property. His property completely abuts this project. We have seen a lot of changes in this project over the last several months, and we appreciate those changes. All these changes have been welcomed. So we're here to say that Dr. Foster is in support of the project. There are three stipulations that we would like to see added to it. After consultation with the applicant, we've agreed that lots 17, 18, and 19 should all be single-story, so we'd like to see a modification that reflects that. We'd also like to see a stipulation that requires notification to Dr. Foster in the event that there's a PHO application filed on this. And finally, this really isn't a stipulation, but we'd like to see an acknowledgement from the applicant, that they will come back and apply for a variance in order to allow an eight-foot fence along the common property line. eight-foot fence along the common property line. Right now, the code only allows a six-foot fence, whereas Tatum Ranch, property owners to the north and south already have an eight-foot fence, so we'd like to have that as well. With that, I'd like to say thank you very much.
Thank you. And finally, our applicant, Ms. Jordan Rose.
Thank you. Good evening, Vice Mayor, members of the council. For your records, I'm Jordan Rose with Rose Law Group, and with me tonight is the owner of the property, the Empire Group, Rich Zachar, and his planning manager, Karen Gobkin, which I destroyed your name, I'm sorry, our engineer, who if you want to talk about the water issues, which we will be fixing, or the roadway, which we will also be improving, Shelby, and then my planner, my senior planner, Jennifer Hall, who is just an absolute godsend and has been working with the neighbors. And I can't thank the neighbors enough for all the time that they have spent with Jennifer and our team here. Thank you Patty and Gary, and Rachel, and Ned, and Pete Garias, who's not here today, but was helpful, and Rick, and all of you. I know that we weren't able to satisfy all of the county neighbors who live farther from the site, but as you saw, our legal protest was removed, we have all the surrounding neighbors in support. This is very compatible with the area in that the general plan shows this as two to five to the acre, and we're coming in at two-point-one to the acre. We thank the Planning Commission and the village for their unanimous support of the project, and if you'd like, and in fact, we were presented by Mr. Farrar, who gave the PowerPoint presentation with, last night, with a drawing that I think you all were copied on, a hand drawing, and this actually shows nineteen lots, which is exactly what we're proposing today. So I can go through a very short PowerPoint to show you some of the things that we've done, or not, you tell me what you'd prefer, but what I would say is that our density has been lowered by forty percent, our open space has increased by seven-point-eight percent, our average lot size is two-thousand-five-hundred to three-thousand feet larger than most of the, than almost all of the lots in Tatum Ranch. Sixty-four percent increase in lot size since we were last here two months ago, and the minimum lot square footage is sixty-seven percent increased since then. We've lowered our density from thirty-two to nineteen, and honestly, in my almost twenty years of doing this, I've really never seen a developer so responsive to the community. I've never seen so many changes, and I don't know that anyone has. But I'm happy to go through a few-minute PowerPoint if that's helpful to you. Thank you for your time. Any questions?
Thank you very much.
Yes.
I have a couple of questions.
Councilman Nowakowski.
So the protest was lifted, or what was, can you explain that to me?
Yes, Vice Mayor and Councilman Nowakowski, the legal protest was actually, when we came to you about two months ago, we had a legal protest on three sides from City of Phoenix residents. We have none of that now. They've all revoked their protest, and I think your staff has copies of those revocations. We've worked hard, and I shouldn't, and I'm up here saying "we," and I should really say Jennifer and the team, because they've spent nights and weekends, and the neighbors, they've spent nights and weekends doing that. So we really appreciate it. I mean, we've made a lot of concessions, and I will also say, if there is a motion to approve, we would like to add to the motion to stipulate that Lot seventeen would be single-story, just as the representative from Dr. Foster indicated.
And Councilmember Diegoz and myself, we represent a rural area out in Levine, and with the storms last year, we had some problems with the flooding. Could you address that? I know that Councilmember Diegoz has been a champion in making sure the Levine area is taken care of. I just want to make sure that this area is taken care of also.
Chair and Councilman Nowakowski, I'll actually ask our engineer to come up and address that. I mean, we have to address flooding issues, there's no flooding going on on our property right now, but if you, Shelby, do please.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and councilmembers. I'd be happy to address that. We're fortunate on this site that there are no U.S. Army Corps of Engineer navigable waters or delineated washes. There is not significant flows through the site. What does come through the site is what hits the site, and we will actually, instead of having the runoff like currently happens today in 44th Street, will be retaining all of the one-hundred-year, two-hour retention volume requirements. We have not asked for any kind of waiver from that for pre- versus post or first flush. So we will be actually providing that full one-hundred-year retention. Along with that, we will have dry wells in place to ensure that the water is dewatered from the basin within thirty-six hours as required. That will actually be designed to dewater within eighteen hours, but with the safety factor for clogging, it'll actually dewater in eighteen to thirty-six hours. That definitely will help with the neighbors and the surrounding community.
Could you speak to some of the slides they showed and the road improvements, because some of the testimony was inconsistent with what I had understood, and so I just want to make sure.
Sure. So along our frontage, the full pavement will be improved, which is two lanes, curb and sidewalk, that we'll work through with staff on how to do that. The roadway that you saw in the pictures was actually improved, as they said, by the county, and it was offset from the section line to the west. So we need to work with staff to figure out how we will tie into that existing pavement, but we'll be providing pavement along our frontage, and with that, we'll work with staff on how to best tie into that for tapers and transitions.
And so the pictures in the slides, was, that was not in front of your?
That is not in front of our property, no.
And does it depend on Maricopa County Flood Control having budget to address it?
Correct.
Because we have learned the hard way that that budget is not, is limited.
Correct, yes.
Okay.
But south, yeah, we're still doing along our frontage, but the pictures were actually south of us, so.
Thank you.
So my understanding is that, excuse me, my understanding, what I just heard, was that you're doing it along your frontage, the property where it's being developed, and some of the issues that is happening is beyond the property that's being developed, that's also being flooded, and this will be impacted.
Vice Mayor and Councilwoman Pastore, the flood control, the things that we're doing with our onsite retention should actually help alleviate some of the flood issues. If the neighbor, if the county residents that spoke are having flooding issues, this should only help their flooding issues. We will not negatively impact that by any means, if that addresses your question.
Kinda. That's okay.
And in addition, we, now remember, we're only providing nineteen lots, which is the lowest end of the density spectrum on your general plan, and those nineteen lots, we'll do the traffic improvements, obviously, that are warranted by the traffic engineering.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Rose.
Thank you.
I'll turn it over to Councilman Waring.
Yeah, I had a question for Alan. Can you talk about the North Land Use Plan from nineteen ninety-six?
Yes, Vice Mayor, Councilman Waring. Back in nineteen ninety-six, there were, and then a couple of years before that, there were some difficult zoning cases that happened in this area, and the city undertook what was called the North Land Use Plan at that time. That was developed with extensive public input. It was passed by the mayor and council in nineteen ninety-six, and as part of that, they delineated that boundary of 44th Street being appropriate for two to five dwelling units per acre as the buffer over along Tatum, and the west side of 44th Street being this area of one to two dwelling units per acre on the general plan. It also delineated areas north of Cave Creek Road and west of this area for larger lot residential, for rural preservation areas, and as part of that, the city did go forward and work with the state land department and other property owners, and developed our rural character overlay districts that have more restrictions about open lots for ranches and these types of properties, and those will be something that will be developed in the future. But there was significant public involvement in nineteen ninety-six with adoption of that plan, and that plan is what informed the general plan as you see it today, and why that designation is right down 44th Street.
So part of the issue that Councilman DeCiccio pointed out, as far as there is a disparity between Tatum Ranch and then the county island areas on the west and south, is because it's on this, it's basically a border. Is that right?
Yes, Councilman Waring, that's correct.
So Councilman DeCiccio was correct, that the properties, the property that's being developed, or would be developed, has bigger lots and larger houses, presumably selling for a higher price, than the areas on the east and north, which is Tatum Ranch. Is that right?
Vice Mayor, Councilman Waring, that is correct.
So you're kind of easing into it. The property to the south is Dr. Foster's property, and he's the sole property owner to the south.
That's correct.
The three-quarters, so when we got together two months ago, this has been, I'm not going to kid you, this has been a nightmare case, we're still having long conversations about this on Friday, and then subsequent days here, the last couple of days, sort of trying to finish it up. So it was going to be three-quarter voted, which means people were protesting, I think it was the Goodmans who did the original protest, but now, I mean, we have letters here from basically, if not all those property owners, close to all of them, who are surround this area on all sides, saying they don't want to protest, that they're okay with this plan. We may not thrill with it, but they're okay with it. Is that a fair way to characterize it?
Vice Mayor, Councilman Waring, that's an accurate description of that process.
All right. I see people shaking their heads in the audience. Why would they be shaking their heads if I have these letters?
Yeah, please, you can come up and speak, sir, we can get this gentleman to record.
I guess I'll say while he's walking up, it's not a hundred percent, right? But it is, it's eighty percent, is that correct?
Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead, Councilman.
I'm sorry. Alan, can I say that again? So what's the standard to get the legal protest? Maybe you could just explain that to the audience, because I'm sure they're not conversant.
Vice Mayor, Councilman Waring, under state statute and the zoning ordinance, twenty percent of the property owners, based upon land area of any one side, can sign a petition to trigger a three-quarter vote requirement of the mayor and council to approve a zoning change. In this case, that twenty percent threshold was met on three sides, and that's how it appeared before the council two months ago. And since that time, with the meetings they've had and the changes they made to the site plan, those folks who signed that petition to get up to that twenty percent have rescinded there, so they no longer meet that twenty percent threshold on any of the three sides.
So is that another way of saying that at least eighty percent of the people surrounding the property are okay with this development, is that?
Vice Mayor, Councilman Waring.
I'm trying to put it in terms that the audience members, people watching at home would understand, rather than the legalese that we tend to engage in.
I would say that it's probably an accurate statement, you know, somewhat generalized in that regard.
Understand. Okay, there were statements made, at least one of the speakers earlier, everybody hates this plan, but obviously, we've had people speak in favor of it, and we've got letters from neighboring property owners, so we know pretty much for sure that pretty much eighty percent of them or more who abut the property are okay with it. They had the right letters to rescind the three-quarters vote.
Vice Mayor, Councilman Waring, they, letters or emails to say they no longer?
Yeah, I've got them here. So, okay, yes, go ahead. And if you could just introduce yourself.
My name is Don Southers. I live at forty-three thirty-three East Beadona Road. My property is an acre-plus. It backs up to, who most of you people know, Pete Garias, and I've lived there since nineteen ninety-seven. I have horses, and I ride that area exclusively, and it's not true that eighty percent of the people are for this development. There isn't probably anybody here that is for this development. Nobody wants this development. We feel like we don't have much choice, and a lot of people have just given in because they think, well, that's the best we're going to do, but nobody wants it. Everybody hates it, okay? This does not fit in with our development, with our rural setting. It's going to bring nothing but traffic problems. Tatum Ranch has very little skin in this scheme, although we appreciate their support that they've given us. The only thing that they have skin in is that they don't want two-story homes backing up to their property. They are not going to have the traffic problem. We have one-lane roads that are undeveloped. If you see what they're doing to, at the development they're building now at 44th Street and Dynamite, if you see what roads that they're developing, that they have to improve in front of that development, it's a joke. It's halfway finished, but it's going to be a joke. And it's going to have two lanes going down to one lane, and then you get to the next development that they're proposing, and it's got two lanes again. It's going to be like an hourglass effect, it's going to be a quagmire there. We, our development, our little rural area cannot facilitate all the vehicles that are going to be coming through there safely. It's basically one-lane roads. And people that sign those letters, I understand they were bullied and threatened that they had to do this. Nobody wants this development.
Thank you, Mrs. South, thank you, sir. Councilman. All right, we got it. Sir, fill out a.
Do you want to respond to that first? Ms. Rose.
Did you already, are you, did you fill out a card wishing not to speak? Okay, what is your name, sir?
James Cullen.
Okay.
One of the reasons that I wanted to speak is I usually agree with everything DeCiccio always says, and this is the first time I've found that I disagree with him. I started a long time ago on the developments like Tatum Ranch and Tatum Highlands, and they were forced on us by the Board of Supervisors of the county, and then it became City of Phoenix. Went to all those meetings and everything, and tried to work that thing. So we're talking about, we have a nice development to the east of this, that's all fine and dandy. They railroaded it through, they, you know, now it exists, and now you're using that as ammunition, as why you should have another development. But this is, the way it came from the county Board of Supervisors, even the two-story thing and all that, they're told, it didn't matter how much you had, you could see before, and then they just said it was going to be a certain number of feet above the ground at Tatum Highlands, and then they allowed the developer to raise the level of the ground ten more feet. So we no longer trust, you know, the way it shifts from, you know, the county to, you know, then the city, and now I'm at Forty-Fourth and Dynamite, and that park that should have been, you know, a detention area where they had dry wells, never got built, so it's all like, all the water that comes down has to, you have to let it go through. And, you know, in this case, this place may not have that kind of a flow, but the city won't move if they really have, you know, created a problem upstream. But in any case, it was, you know, the Councilman DeCiccio, who I just support in almost everything he says, because he saves money for the city, but in this case, pointing at development, that was railroaded into us, and it was, you know, brought through the Board of Supervisors, and now we can't use that as good evidence as why we should now create another new spot, you know, when we already have, you know, tried to fight and it's sort of like, we're retreating all the time and just fighting the programs.
Thank you, sir.
And thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you, sir.
Just say one thing, though, too. Oh, if you could come back up just for a second, oh, well. Oh, that's, yeah, more of a comment than, thank you, but the question I had was more along the lines of, if you look at the higher density just to the east of you, and then if you go back to the original plans that were done, I believe in, when were they, in the nineties? I remember Francis Barwood, that's when this whole debate really started about where it needs to be. It fits in line with the plan. If anything, it's on the lower end of that, and that's really where I was coming from on it. What I'm talking about is the, you know, the struggle people have up here, is that when you see that, and you look at what that original plan had in place, and you're in the low end of that with this project, it just, you know, and I get the, believe me, I totally get the lifestyle issue. I get it. I mean, I live in an area that's like this. It's just that it doesn't fit, I mean, the project seems to fit and play with the land that was there, with the amount of compromising that was given on it, too. That's where I'm looking at it on. Oh, yeah, you can, I don't mind if you're all right with that, Councilman. I mean, I, you know.
At Forty-Fourth and Dynamite, there's, you know, just, it really is just one lane, and they have the new development of both the homes that creates that, and this one, you know, is just an extension just beyond there, so it's, you know, it is, people, they, in that development, they have to be able to go somewhere, and though it shows a street that has access to, access to Cave Creek Road, I think a lot of people are going to try to come down Forty-Fourth and then go over to Tatum, so it's just not, it's just not designed. When they, when they built Tatum Ranch, they made Tatum Road go right around, so it takes, you know, all the traffic in some. you know, all the traffic in some direction. Instead of this, this development, there's no place to go with your car. And again, I talked to Betsy Bayless and everything when they're developing that thing, you know, that Tatum Ranch and all, and all that congestion, and we didn't give in. We were just buffaloed. We were bull, bull down, you know, and so we couldn't do anything. We just backed up in that, to the next layer. And then across the street, they built another development, you know, as Philly, and we tried to deal with it, and they, they created flooding problems, but they, they solved their own flooding problem, but they made bigger problems with a culvert in front of us. So we, we no longer really trust looking what they did somewhere else and then created water flows through Tatum Ranch, you know, that came down further on down.
But the discussion then, too, and I hope you don't mind me...
Yes.
...bringing these things up, too, is that back in the 90s, there was this debate that occurred...
Yes.
...about where it should be. And then that's when that plan was set in place that would allow this type of project to occur here. You know, there was a huge debate back in the 90s. I remember Francis Barwood represented the area, and then that's where that demarcation line became. So if you look at that, and then you also take into effect, I mean, and I, you know, again, but with the quality of life, you got to look at what are the other vacant parcels that are out there, and there's just nothing else out there, really, that I saw, at least from the site plan or the site map that I saw, that would have another, you would consider to be a negative impact on your neighbors and on your home, anywhere near that.
I, I just have, I don't want to get historical on you, not hysterical, but historical. Mr. Keating had a way of doing something. They went around secretly buying out small parcels of land and everything, and it, no one knew what was happening until all of a sudden, you know, all these little companies were buying all, all the residents around, giving them great prices and everything. We never knew it was going to hit us, and then we got hit with Tatum Ranch. That's how it came about. They didn't have any grand proposal on how things were going. They went and they bought out the, everybody that was around there and got, you know, got all the opposition away by just taking everybody out of the game. So that's how that goes. And then they put a master plan on when there was nobody left. They had purchased all the land under false companies and all other kinds of subterfuses just so that, you know, they could make that project, and they spent a huge amount of money doing it.
And that's a very logical argument there, because you never know what could happen in the future. But if you look again, here's just some points, just to point out, is that, one, you look at 44th Street, that was the line. It was negotiated, it was intense when that was negotiated out, and that's why you see what it is. The availability that is right now of open land to do anything differently than it is already there, it just doesn't look like it's there, but that's true. There is an argument that they could come up and buy that up. But then you still have that 44th Street line that this council has been pretty much adhering to, that I don't think we've ever had a change on that. And then you look at what the property is just directly to the east, maybe a little bit to the north, too, that looks like it's a little higher density than this. You put those in there, you can't see where this could ever happen again out there in your community anywhere else. It just doesn't seem like it would happen. And that's really where I'm bringing up from my comments and my questioning.
Well, you know, Mr. Keating had Lincoln savings, and that's how he did it. It doesn't look like it could happen, but what they did, they flat out just went to individual owners and just made them an offer they couldn't refuse, and they kept doing that. And pretty soon then, they had the ability to make any kind of development they wanted. I, I have a little personal problem with the city...
Sure.
...because I have one foot, you know, into the road, and then it becomes city, and then on my side, I have, I deal with the county, and the county tells me to go to the city. The city then tells me it's county property, and no one can handle, you know, some of the drainage problems.
Thank you, sir.
I just thought I'd put something on, I want to end it, so it's getting too long.
Yeah, I appreciate it. Now, before I close the public hearing, thank you, sir. Thank you so much. Before I close the public hearing, I want to offer Ms. Rose the final comment, if you would like to...
Vice Mayor and members of the council, I appreciate that. And I just, because there was a suggestion that, well, that our team or that Jennifer bullied anyone, I just wanted to show you a couple of things. Can you flip the next slide? We, these are all the stipulations. You can see we're very compatible. Well, and I would note that now we have 11 out of 19 lots are single-story. These were requests made by the neighborhood, and I just want to show you that these requests were made during this two-month period, and we responded. So go ahead, Alan, or whoever's, yeah, Alan, okay. You can flip through this one pretty quick, because I talked about this, but all of the things that, but I want to just show you. Okay, so this was originally, this was a couple of months ago, we had 12 lots along the north, and go ahead and change the slide there, Alan, if you don't mind. And you can see now we only have seven lots. That was a request by the neighbors, if you don't mind another slide. So we had six lots along the east a couple of months ago. Now we have no lots along the east. They're all eliminated. You can see that, Alan, if you could flip again. And you can see over here, single-story. Now we've just added one down in the south, so now we have 11. We had 10, we had zero before. 25-foot rear yard setback, that's now a stipulation. That was something that was requested of us. And another one, please. Original tract A was 10 feet, and now we've increased it 86 feet to 96.23 feet to buffer the county neighbors, and that's on the county side, yeah, and another one. And then the original tract B was 85.5, and now it's, it's 110 again for the county residents. We're trying to work with the county residents and the city residents, and go ahead, Alan. So that was just my chart of all the things that we did, and then maybe flip one more just so I can show you. This was the legal protest. We had 40, I can't see that far away, but 49% or whatever it was on the north, 55%, 35% on the other side, and those are all gone. So we've really felt good about our communication with the neighbors, and again, I just thank them for all the time they spent with our team. So thank you, and I appreciate the time you've given us.
Thank you, Ms. Rose.
Thank you.
At this point, I will, thank you, Ms. Rose.
Thank you.
Okay, the final card is Scott Collins.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
And we'll close out the public hearing at that point.
I'm so angry, I'm honestly, I can't even see straight. I just heard 80/20 opposed. I think that's Tatum Ranch, which actually is next to our development. Quick background, I'm a veteran. I spent my whole life working to buy the ranch, now in question here, Dynamite and 44th Street. I've heard some really disturbing things. The, the water issue, let me be clear, anybody with common sense will be able to tell you that that creates a funnel, and that's going to be a problem downstream. That's just common sense. We've seen it for many years. I grew up on the west side of town. I've seen the same things, where we've been run out, ranches have been closed down. I'm sorry, I'm extremely angry, I just, this affects us all here in this, this ranching What would you do if your lifestyle was in danger? I'm assuming that everybody else would feel the same way I do. They don't want this development to happen. I train horses. My home is a vacation destination. This is a travesty. The gentleman that spoke here earlier, the elderly gentleman, he was exactly right. Developments come in here, they sliced and diced us. They're basically pushing us out. We have no room to stand on here. We're in an L-shaped community. Tatum Ranch, there's no access to Tatum Ranch. I need to paint that real clear picture for you folks. There's no access there. They have a small part, while they're respected neighbors, they have a really small say in this whole deal, because they're not downstream.
Thank you, sir.
And the last thing I'd like to say is, I don't think you realize this, there's 136 homes being built in a half-mile-by-half-mile-square area. 136 on one-to-five-acre properties. How is, how does that make sense? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we'll, we'll close the public hearing. Councilman Waring? Yeah. Do, do... I do, I do need a motion for this. Councilman Waring, this motion to approved. Do we have a second?
With any stipulations?
Yeah.
Okay.
Does the motion approve for the staff member with additional stipulations?
Stipulations dated June 3, 2015, including the one-story lot number 17.
Correct. Just to clarify for the record, that would be in addition to stipulation number five. We'd add this lot number 17.
Okay. Okay, do we have a motion? Do we have a second? We do have a second. Roll call.
DeCiccio, Gallego.
Yes.
Noakowski. Pastor.
No.
Waring.
Yes.
Williams. Valenzuela.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes. Vice Mayor, this is Bill Gates.
Councilman Gates?
Yes.
Your vote?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, motion passes eight to, seven to two. No. Eight to one. Eight to one, motion passes eight to one. Thank you. Item 52.
No, you have to do them separately. There's only two items left.
Item 52, we're going to go ahead and open the public hearing once again. This is Solano Transit Oriented District Policy Plan, Reinvent Phoenix. All right, okay, well, we do have a few cards in favor. Shannon Skatari, Dorina Bustamante, Sylvia Yerutia, and Suzanne Fister. We can just ask for the motion, right? And if we have any others that would like to speak, other than those that have already put forth their card.
And we certainly appreciate your hard work on this and diligence and many meetings attended, but thank you for being here.
Okay. All right, hearing no others that would like to speak. Let me close the public hearing. Can entertain a motion?
Motion to adopt resolution 21331 as unanimously recommended by the City Council Neighborhoods Housing and Development Subcommittee on May 19, 2015.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
DeCiccio, Gallego.
Yes.
Gates.
Yes.
Noakowski. Pastor. Waring. Williams. Valenzuela.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes.
Yes.
Seven to one.
Okay, motion carries at seven to one. Okay, I believe this is the last item of the evening here. Item 53, Uptown Transit Oriented District Policy Plan, Reinvent Phoenix. We'll open up the public hearing. Do we have any cards? We do have a few cards. Sylvia Yerutia in favor, Shannon Skatari, Dorina Bustamante, all in favor. Any others who would like to speak or to express their, whether they are in favor or opposed? Hearing none, I will close the public hearing. Entertain a motion?
Motion to adopt resolution 21332 as unanimously recommended...
Second.
...by the City Council Neighborhoods Housing and Development Subcommittee on May 19.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilwoman Gallego, a second by Councilwoman Pastor. Roll call.
DeCiccio. Gallego.
Yes.
Gates.
Yes.
Noakowski. Pastor.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes.
Motion carries eight to one. That was the final item. Meeting is adjourned. Meeting is adjourned. We have two public comments, comment cards.